Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, September 9 Bennington Select Board Meeting. It's very nice to see you here. My name is Jeanne Jenkins and I have the pleasure of chairing this board. I will ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nancy White.
I'm Ed Woods.
Hi, I'm Tom Haley.
Good evening, Clark Adams.
Excellent. And coming in as we speak.
No pressure.
Speed walk, right?
Yes, hi, Sarah Perrin. Thanks for holding that for me.
All right, and also with us tonight is our town manager, Stu Hurt, Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes, and Josh Boucher, who we very much appreciate filming this live for Cat TV. So, thank you all. First order of business tonight is we need to amend the agenda. Would like to ask that we add an agenda item after public comment that is entitled, and Nancy, I can give you this, "Vote to Release Two Opinions from Town Council," Merrill Bent, referenced, referred to in the September 9, 2024, Managers Report concerning, one, appropriate purchasing procedures for the skate park, and, two, proper notice and conduct of the public hearing regarding the request for a planning grant to assist in the Shire's potential merger. Yes, please give me that.
I'm going to make the motion as stated. This is a motion to amend the agenda, just to remind everybody of where we are.
Second.
All right. So now we can have discussions. Stu, do you want to explain why we need to do, why we're doing this motion?
Yes. All opinions that are given to the town by its council are considered confidential, and the board, in order to release those opinions to the public, must vote to do so, essentially to waive our right to client lawyer privilege.
All right. Thank you very much. So, any other discussion before we vote?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You have a discussion?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
My question is, exactly, these attorneys, who are their clients? Is it the town of Bennington or the people of Bennington?
The town of Bennington is the client.
And that is composed of who? You mean, the people of this town aren't entitled to hear about the legal directions this board is receiving without special consideration?
Well, I'm not sure I agree with the way you phrased it, Clark, but the town of Bennington is the client. We are the governing body of the town of Bennington, and therefore, this board is the client. The people of Bennington are constituents for the members of this board; they are not necessarily constituents for our attorney.
Can I ask, what we're doing right now is amending the agenda. Once we get to it as an agenda item, then we'll, again, be able to have discussion on whether we want to release it or not, but what we're doing right now is, this is a motion to amend the agenda. Any other comments on?
As long as we can comment on those once we get to it.
Well, yeah, when we get to the agenda item.
Yep, okay.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, that was unanimous. All right. So, now, back to the Pledge of Allegiance, which we always begin with.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right. Tom, would you read our vision statement that guides our work?
I'd be happy to. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of August 21, which was a regular board meeting, and the 26, which was the listening session, the warrants, and then our liquor licenses. Any, for the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
One comment.
Thank you. All right, discussion?
Yes.
Let me just make a comment that the dates that you just mentioned are reversed.
Oh, is it reversed?
The 21st was the listening session.
Oh.
The 26th was a regular meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any discussion? I have something, I believe the person who was present was, in the also present, was, that spoke, was not Sarah Potts, but Sarah Beth Ward.
Which meeting are you referring to?
Oh, I'm sorry, the 26th, the meeting, the regular meeting.
Thank you.
And also, page 11. There are two places, line 376, rather than the BPI expert, it should be the DEI expert. And then, in a similar vein, on line 382, rather than a DBI report, it's a DEI report, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion. Any other?
I've sent in all my corrections, and thank you for taking those.
Yes, Nancy?
The agenda for the 26, page 3.
The agenda?
Agenda.
Or the minutes?
Minutes, sorry.
Okay.
Page 3, number 65.
Yep.
It says, "Public Hearing."
Yep.
The chair never announced we were holding a public hearing. How did the audience and citizens know we were holding a public hearing?
It's in the minutes, therefore, it was announced.
And it's also, it's also on the agenda, and it was also warned.
Yep.
Okay. Well, every time I've seen the select board hold a public hearing at a regular meeting or on a special night, the chair announces, "We are now going to hold a public hearing."
We did that, that's why it's line number 5 in the minutes.
Well, you know, I can't, I can't say, because I haven't re-looked at the, at Cat TV, at the Cat TV tape, but what I will say is, it was warned, and it was on the agenda, and when Cat got up, she said, "We are here for a public hearing." So, whether I said it or not, it was clearly indicated that it was a public hearing, and it was warned. So, any other comments on the minutes?
I guess I do have a comment on the listening session.
Okay.
I really appreciated when it was stated that we had a hard stop at 7:00, and we were being respectful of everyone's time, for the citizens and for ourselves, so I'd just like to say, for our meetings as well, to be respectful of each other's times, and to try to have a hard stop at the time that we have on our agenda.
Okay. Any other, any other comments on the minutes? Seeing none.
I have some on the warrants.
On the warrants?
On the accounts.
Okay.
Are we on warrants? I'm sorry.
Yes. That on my glasses. The second page, 401660, conservation projects. Mow the landfill, $900. Why is that listed under a conservation project?
That's the name of the business, Nancy.
Oh, okay.
That's what he calls his business.
Okay.
And we are required to maintain the landfill by mowing it at least once a year under our agreement following the closure of the Superfund site.
So, this is just a one-time, a year?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do it in the fall, so as to preserve the bird habitat that exists spring to fall.
Okay. Two lines below that, 401662, 802 Marketing. It says, $637.50. A meeting that someone went to?
This says, "Management," Nancy.
Yeah, that is a management invoice for 802 Marketing.
SEO/SEM management is what we're paying for.
And who did that get paid to?
That gets paid to 802 Marketing. That's our main provider for our marketing expertise. We use 802 Marketing under a contract that...
They're running our SEO/SEM campaigns.
And what I will also say is that when we, if there are further questions about that, that are more technical in nature, Shannon does have her monthly report in, in the packet this month, and talks specifically about this, and she will be here, so she could, you could ask her directly.
She'll be coming to an agenda soon?
No, she's coming, she is coming tonight. Yeah, she's here.
Oh, and she has the information on that she can put up for the breakdown?
You have information already in your packet that she provided, and she can answer questions on that information, or if you have more questions about this particular warrant.
Okay, she had sent it to me, I didn't see it in the packet.
It's already in the packet, Nancy.
It's in the packet.
Okay, then you can tell me where it is, I couldn't find it.
Well, do you read the, okay, so if you look at the managers' report, the way this is set up every single month is, the managers' report is on the top, and then, any letters that refer to things that are in the managers' report are right after that, and then whoever's turn it is to have a monthly report is behind that. So, Community Development Report, September 4, 2024, is in here.
I see, this is a breakdown she sent me, so I'll ask questions when...
Yes, well, what I was saying is, if it's beyond Stu's expertise, Shannon can answer it, okay?
Should I ask her now?
No. You should wait till we get to the managers' report.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, okay.
Page 3, 40164, Bennington Solar, and I see there's a whole line of bills for solar. Starts at $16,628, and I see it continues down the page.
Actually, no. It is a one-line, and that's paid to, that's part of our net metering agreement with Bennington Solar, which is a solar field south of town. It covers meters that the town has contracted with them, gives us a break on our power, but we also pay them a fee for that service.
If I may, this is a monthly invoice, Stu?
I'll look out to Dan, just to see if he's...
I don't know if it's monthly enough, because you get billed periodically for the amount of energy we pay at this company for that energy because we're contracting it so.
And I'm thinking, we asked the last time this came up, too.
That's correct.
So, we actually could look back in the warrants and see how, whether this is monthly or maybe every six weeks. The next line, Nancy, is FW Web Company, so all those items that you're seeing is actually a different item.
Okay, I'm looking far further down, 401670, Green Mountain Power Corp. Ball Junior High Electric, 481, is that ARPA money?
That is being paid out of the ARPA account, yes. $7,876 is the ARPA account. So, it's one of the carrying costs we have at the Ben High Building due to our lease.
That this board agreed to carry in the, in the past.
Okay, it's just, it doesn't clarify it's ARPA, that's why I'm, I'm asking about that.
Yeah, the account number would clarify it, but I understand you wouldn't necessarily know all of the details of the account numbers.
On page 5, 401689, Otis Elevator Company, 407, is that for the elevator at the senior building?
No, at the, at our senior building, I believe it is, yes.
Okay.
And this is a second invoice? That question's been asked before about the Otis, I think last month? Are we...
We have, we have two elevators, actually, that we operate. One is at the senior center, this is actually, 4570 is actually the police building, or the fire building.
Which building?
I'm sorry, the fire building, right here. This elevator, right here.
Okay, and last month, it was the senior center.
Yeah, that may be true, yes.
The next line, 401690, Patnold Pool Plasters, $22,695. This is for the rec center.
Yes, that's correct.
Did anybody attempt to get a grant so that the taxpayers didn't have to pay for it?
No, there were, we're not, as far as I know, there were not grants available for this, this kind of work, which is maintenance work on, on the pool, which is required periodically. It's not an annual event, but we are now, have set up a reserve so that we have these funds available to us every five years, assuming that that's the time that we do the pool wash and grout maintenance.
Well, first, the town taxpayers are already paying close to an extra $100,000 a year for pennies for parks. I don't understand why that money isn't coming out of that account. Second, I read a couple of months ago that Manchester got a grant to pay for the work they did on our tennis courts. So, if Manchester cannot go out and get grants to help their taxpayers and town budgets, I really think we need to emphasize our town officials, start putting our town budget first.
Nancy, we budget for this money, we review it with the select board on an annual basis. As far as I know, grants for maintenance are not necessarily, or readily available. If Manchester was successful in getting a grant to do something, that's fantastic, but I don't know that those grants are readily available, and that's all I can tell you.
And we do want to remember, we are looking at warrants, this is not a discussion time, this is time to look at warrants, ask the purpose.
Let me just say, for comparison purposes, there may have been some capital improvement that was done as a result of that improvement that you're referring to in Manchester. If some, some capital improvement was made to the facility while it was being maintained, that would make sense for a grant, that's why that might have been possible. This, this looks like it was just maintenance to me.
I don't think we should be double billing the taxpayers for recreation.
I don't think we are.
Again, we are looking at the warrants. Anything else, Nancy?
That's it.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? Okay, go for it.
Clear, points of clarity, I would hope that in the future, we would not use acronyms, or, I think one of the questions Nancy may have posed was based on acronyms, which I didn't see as being quite clear.
Where is the acronym that we're talking about?
For a question, I'm trying to find her initial question.
Because the, the first line is the vendor company name.
Right, I understand that. That 401662, on page 2, where had the SEO/SEM/NGT, those acronyms, it'd be nice if people knew what, what those were.
That's a standard industry acronym, again, Shannon can address that in her, in her Community Development Director report.
Notice I said it would be nice if we had that, so people understand it, I think that question wouldn't have happened if someone knew what those were.
That's a good point.
If I, if I could say, though, unfortunately, we are constrained by the number of letters we can use in the program that we use to present this report, so that, that may be why these things are shortened, is to, is to conform to the amount of letters that we're allowed to use in the program that, that we use in the municipality.
I also want to remind all of us, and I think all of us need this reminder, including me, that if we have a question about what something means, we, we get these packets on Thursday morning, so that we have time to ask those questions of staff, particularly of the town manager beforehand, and, you know, sometimes we remember to do that, and sometimes we don't, but to the degree we can, I think it helps. Any other comments on the warrant?
Yes, again, page 7, item 401710, for a total of, like, $26,000, what are we, what are we paying for?
This is a VLCT passive.
Right, what is that?
I'm sorry, what was the number again, Clark?
It's VLCT passive, 401710.
Oh, that is, that's our insurance. We pay, our insurance is on a semi-annual basis, so that is a combination, no, it's all, it's all workers' comp and liability insurance. The 483 will tell you it's a workers' comp insurance, the 480 at the end will tell you it's a property and liability insurance, and we pay that on a semi-annual basis to the VLCT.
And, and when it says passive, we know it has something to do with insurance, right?
Yes, passive, God, I wish I could remember what the term, it's Property and Casualty Insurance Fund.
It also says, "Property and Workers, and WC, which is workers' comp," that would, that would lean toward insurance under the description.
Yep. All right, and on page 8, item 401711, Beamer's is a municipal employees' retirement system, and that is, we, we pay into that on a, in this case, I believe it's an annual basis, the unfunded liability for when we joined the fund some many years ago. We were with a private insurer for pension, the pension was not very good, the board at that time asked us to take a look at the Beamer's system, which is a system that is managed by the, a board of employees of municipalities, as well as experts from the treasurer's office, and we agreed to join the fund, but we had to fund the unfunded liability, which at that time was some 30 years of unfunded liability. As a municipality, we're not required to carry the maximum value of our retirement potential. Under Beamer's, they would prefer that we do so, and at that time, the law was changed to allow municipalities to join them, as long as they agreed to pay their unfunded liability over time. Okay, well, what's confusing, I see a total of four lines here totaling $814,000, so that's what that is dealing with, unfunded liability, all of those entries?
All those, yes.
He said that's a annual payment?
It's an annual, it's an annual bill that is, that is paid by the town. And we, I can't tell you, Clark, how many years we have left in that payment, but we're, we're getting closer and closer to the end of that particular payment. I just don't know how many years are left.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on the warrants? All right. So, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, it's unanimous. Excellent. All right, on to public comment. Want to remind everyone that the purpose of public comment is to share information that's not on, being discussed on the agenda, but is for the common good. Please keep your, your comments to no more than three minutes. We don't have Jeanne with us tonight, and we forgot to get the flashcards from her, so somebody who wants to volunteer to...
Would you be the timekeeper tonight?
Sure.
Okay, we'll make sure, you'll get a 30-second warning from Tom if, if you're still talking at two and a half minutes. And, and also, please be civil and courteous. All right, so, first up, Joe, I'm not sure I know how to pronounce your last name, I'm sorry.
I did it wrong myself, so, no problem.
That's lovely.
I pronounce it Joe Jervis, and the reason I'm here is to introduce myself. I'm running for Vermont State Senate for Bennington District, so hopefully, come November 6, I'll be your senate-elect for the district. You know, this is a critical election, we've got a lot of issues for Vermont affordability with tax increases that we've seen lately, a lot of the district, a lot of issues with the huge education tax increase, and most Vermonters don't know that Act 18 was passed a year ago, and with Act 18, we're facing a $4.03 surcharge on fuel oil and $2.12 a gallon on propane. I'm not sure how most Vermonters are going to handle a doubling of their winter heating cost. I'm a former Army officer, as an Army officer, I took an oath to defend and protect the Constitution of the United States. As a candidate, I am getting a lot of criticism that I shouldn't be practicing all of the rights that we have in this constitution, specifically the First Amendment, freedom of religion, freedom of speech. Vermont takes particular concern on freedom of speech as well. Article 13 of the Vermont Constitution says that the people have a right to freedom of speech and of writing and publishing their sentiments concerning the transactions of government, and therefore, the freedom of the press ought not be restrained. And, you know, as a future public official, I've got a duty to have a thick skin and to hear the constituents, anything they want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. All right, next up, Mike Bethel to speak to Benmont.
Just let the public know, there is a petition out, and it's doing pretty good, to get an advisory vote on, to basically not go beyond Hunt Street with the calming, and whatever you want to call it, changing the Benmont at this point. I think it's very important that nobody on this board or in this town knows what the future of Benmont is going to look like in the next several years, and to do what you're doing now, it may impede any business, future business, that wants to come here on some of the vacant property. I'd also like to know, where did we get the money to do what we've done, and do we have the money to finish your idea, but you can't ask questions. And the other thing I'd like to say is, whether I say it for the rest of the meeting or not, you get out of life what you put into it, and when this board, any one of yous individually or collectively, don't treat the audience right that's in front of you, or your constituents, that's probably why you're getting the negative feedback that you're getting on Facebook. I don't agree with any personal attacks on Facebook, nobody should do it, especially to anybody's family, or personal things, like Mr. Woods referred to at one meeting, but you get out of life what you put into it, and if there was more respect to the audience, maybe you'd get more respect back, and to each other. You've got two new members on this board, and I'll be damned if I like the way some of the words are spewed out from some people, to these people. I voted for both of these people, and I want them treated with respect, like I treat all of you with respect. So, please consider that, and I, I believe in freedom of speech, like the gentleman that just spoke, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I neglected to say, if we can respond to any comments that come up, such as funding, we will do that at the conclusion of all the comments, okay? So, we'll just sort of collect them. Next up, Jenny Doer, talk about the Apple Barn Festival.
Hi.
Oh.
Can you hear me? Is it high enough?
I think so.
Yeah? Okay. I'm here just to let, you know, remind people who already know that the Apple Barn and Bake Shop, located at 604 US Route 7 South, is excited to announce its upcoming Harvest Festival on Saturday, September 21, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It will be a full day of fun-filled activities for all ages, mouth-watering treats, and live entertainment. The live entertainment is going to be the Wanda Houston Project, with, she says, "we." We are thrilled to welcome, welcome the incredibly talented Wanda Houston. Wanda played in the Thursday Night Live series that I worked on a few years ago. She's amazing, her band is headlining musical act for this year's festival, she's originally from Chicago. She has dazzled audiences all across the country and around the world with her powerful voice. She's amazing, I won't read more about her, you can look at that in the press release or on the Facebook description of the event, but she really is not to be missed, she'll be playing between 12 and 3. The Big Dill, the ultimate brine battle, in addition to the musical entertainment, we're excited to introduce a brand-new competition to this year's festivities. The Big Dill, the ultimate brine battle, this pickle competition celebrates the bounty of harvest season with a publicly judged showdown, whether you've seasoned pickle matter or just a fan of tangy, crunchy treats, this is an event you won't want to miss. Contestants will showcase their best homemade pickles, and it's open to, it's not just cucumber pickles, it could be any pickle, anything. There's a mini cider donut eating competition, this was a big hit last year, it was actually won by one of the poundle selectmen at the time, so come and beat his time, stuffing tiny apple cider donuts into your mouth, it's very entertaining. The Harvest Fest promises to be a day full of family-friendly activities, delicious food, and entertainment that embodies... and entertainment that embodies the spirit of the season. In addition to the featured competitions and live music, guests can enjoy a variety of seasonal attractions, including a corn maze, pumpkin picking, and a number of fall-themed photo opportunities. It will also feature a wide array of kids' events, such as scavenger hunts. I'm doing that.
Thirty seconds.
It's going to be a good one this time. Painted pumpkins, bubbles, corn pits, and more. So that's Saturday, the 21st, from 10 to 5.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who did not sign up for public comment who would like to speak? Yes, please. Please state your name and your town of, in the town you live in.
I'm Norma Haushild, and I live at Corby Whitney. And if you remember, back on June 10th, we were at the meeting here and voiced concerns about the way Shire's is handling maintenance and everything. Well, the elevator was fixed. That's been working beautiful for the, since then. Then I invited Kat to come over and discuss with the residents all the other issues of the building, and she did that on June 28th. And there's a big list. I've got a list here. I wrote down everything. Nothing's been done on that at all. We've heard nothing from Kat. And from what I understand, she's no longer there?
She is.
No, she's gone.
Ah, I thought she was finishing.
Thursday.
She's no longer there.
Thank you.
Yeah. So now, what do we do?
Mary Cohen, Mary Cohen is the new contact. And if you, I do, if you use email, if you can leave your email address with Nancy Lively, then I will connect you and Mary Cohen. Okay?
Okay. The other concern was the merger. Shouldn't the residents receive some kind of notification from the landlords?
Honestly, this is, this, I mean, this is a private merger, so we honestly don't know the rules for the merger. But that would be a good question for Mary Cohen as well.
I guess my biggest concern is the fact that that building is on the National Registry of Historic Buildings, and it's not being maintained. And it's pretty shabby-looking. Would it be possible for an inspector from the town to come over and inspect the building?
We've actually inspected the building. Our inspectors have been in the building, yes.
When?
I couldn't tell you the dates, but yes.
This year?
Paul Dansero has been there, yes, within the last two months, three months.
This is since the Shire's hearing? Is that right?
Since the, since we found out about the elevator. Yes, we've been there.
Okay, well, thank you.
Hi, I'm Tamia Gastiel, and I also live at Corby Whitney. And I also was here previously. You say the inspectors have been there. What kind of inspectors? Building inspector or...?
Yes, building inspector.
And what were their findings?
I don't, I could, don't have those with me. I couldn't tell you what those findings were.
So...
But as far as I know, there have been no violation notices issued, no allegations of, of concerns, other than the fact that we were concerned about the elevator, and that has been repaired, as I understand it.
So if, if she wanted to get more information, who in the town would she contact?
Contact Paul Dansero through the, through the main, Dansero, or Bridget Galant. We have two building inspectors. And the main phone number at the town offices is 442-1037.
Don't, don't tell me, because it'll go in here and out there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but it'll probably go on in my head, too, but I've been there too long. But yes, just call the main office at the town offices and ask for Paul or Bridget.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else who didn't sign up who would like to speak? All right, let's move on. All right. Amazingly, we're back at 5:00 a.m., which is the vote to release the two opinions. So we've added it to the agenda for the purposes of discussion. Could I have a motion to release the two opinions?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Paul's second. Thank you. All right, discussion. Yes?
I'll start with the skateboard park. Town of Bennington taxpayers are paying $300,000...
So, so, so the agenda item is whether to release these two opinions. So that is the topic. It is not the skate park, it is the opinion about the skate park.
My question is, why did our town not go out to bid knowing there is Vermont company that has been building skateboard parks, concrete ones for over a decade? I shouldn't have had to take it upon myself two and a half years ago to say, hey, we need to reach out to Parker Construction. He did the skateboard park in Brattleboro, he did the big park in West Lev, New Hampshire. Both of these were years ago. Both parks are highly rated. I've been to Brattleboro, I've talked to the people skating, they like the park. You can go to his website. You can see the different parks he's worked on. I don't know, Dan and Stu, why you didn't want to give a Vermont chant, a business a chance to bid on a $900,000 project instead.
I'm, I'm going to read the instructions that went along with the release of the two opinions, one of which had to do about the use of ARPA funding for, for the skate park. And it says, "Please note that the information contained in this email is confidential in nature and cannot be shared outside the Select Board. Please do not reply all or forward. Over the last several meetings, board members have asked for further information or clarification on two agenda items that have been discussed during these meetings. In response, the board chair and vice chair, along with the town manager, reached out to Merrill Bent, town attorney, to seek legal opinions on both those two items. Attached, you will find two legal opinions as described below." And it's the two that, that I read. Legal opinion concerning applicability of federal procurement standards to revenue-loss categorized ARPA funding, and that's a skate park. And the other is legal opinion regarding the validity of the August 26th public hearing on grant application for the housing merger. These matters are now considered closed, and any further questions should be directed to the town manager. This, we have a legal, we have two legal opinions. What we are doing right now is trying to have a discussion about whether we should release them to the public or not. Whether, if, if someone does not agree with the opinions, I think at this point, it's, it's their legal right to contest it. But in terms of our council's opinion to us, it's a settled matter.
And I think it's no longer this board's place to discuss it further. These, these legal opinions gave us closure.
So...
I beg, I beg to differ. I don't seek closure. The reason, and I'm, the point of matter is, I received multiple inquiries from constituents about the process. I could not answer those questions. I went to Mr. Hurd, and I was given multiple references to research and spending good amount of time boneheading, literally boneheading through all these documents, quite voluminous. I don't know if you've ever read any federal statutes, not being legally trained or even having the administrative background. I went back to Mr. Hurd and said, "I need specific information." I can't say verbatim, but I pointed out to Mr. Hurd that I'm an elected official in this town. People are asking me questions. I have an obligation to answer those questions, and I feel that you have an obligation to give me specific information, not go research the code of federal regulations or readings from the VTLC.
That's what these two legal opinions are.
Would you let me finish? Would you let me finish? I didn't interrupt you.
I'm sorry. That's true.
Now, because I was adamant that as an elected member of this Select Board advocating or attempting to answer the concerns of my constituents, the people of Bennington, I had to be quite aggressive and assertive to get this board and the town manager to provide the legal basis for actions taken, as requested by my constituents. Now, that was accomplished, but at the same time, it was accomplished in what I consider an underhanded manner, saying, "We're not going to tell the people of this town why we did this," which was the nidus of the entire question. People in the town of Bennington had questions as to the legal authority for the actions taken, and this board and this manager decided that the people of Bennington should be kept in the dark, and so now we have to hear, have a hearing to approve of answering to the people we allegedly represent and serve. Now, I am 100% into transparency. If this town or the leadership in this town takes actions that they feel are appropriate, and they have a legal basis for that action, I don't see any reason that we should have to have a discussion to communicate to our constituents that we are conducting business in an honest and forthright manner. If there's anybody up on this board who can think of a reason why we have to hide the legal and appropriate justification for our actions as elected, as elected representatives, I'm all ears. But I am 100% in keeping with allowing the people of this town to hear why we did something and the legal justification for that action.
I will say that the...
Respectfully, Clark... Please, please don't do that. Please don't do that.
Respectfully, Clark, when we seek advice from an attorney, we are bound by that attorney-client privilege, so we, we can't put anything out without us doing what we're doing right now.
Again, as I mentioned earlier in this meeting, as far as I'm concerned, those people out there, they are the clients of this attorney. This attorney is working for the town of Bennington. You people out there on Cat TV land in this room are the town of Bennington. If we on this board are working in a legal, positive manner, I see no good reason that we have to go through machinations to answer questions. Again, the reason it's accelerated to this or elevated to this, individuals in this town felt members of the leadership of this town were not forthcoming and honest with them in answering questions. I've said it before, my phone rings, my email lights up constantly with people saying, "I have questions," or "I have doubts about why this happened." And the fact that we had to go through this to get those questions answered, in my mind, is something I want all of you to think about come March next year when you go in the voting booth.
Clark, I think Stuart was wanting to interject.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, Clark.
I don't want an apology from you. You don't owe me an apology.
I'm not apologizing to you. I'm apologizing to the folks out there that had to listen to what you just said. You and I...
You said what? The people out there have to listen to me speaking? Is their representative...
No, that's not what I said. Sit down, Clark, please.
No.
You don't need to do that.
You don't ever tell me that you owe the people an apology for listening to me attempting to represent my constituents.
Fine, thank you. You made your point. The fact of the matter is, you and I sat and talked about this issue. I provided you with the League of Cities and Towns' opinion as to why we were allowed to avoid federal procurement. I explained to you that we, in this public-private partnership, joined a private entity that already had engaged an architect and designer, and that is why we went with that particular architect and designer. The private entity had come to the table with this individual engaged. Had that not been the case, we might have gone out to bid, we might have ended up with Nancy's individual. But I explained all of that to you. I know it didn't satisfy you. I understand that, and I'm fine with that. But please don't accuse us of malfeasance or underhandedness. None of that is true, and none of that is intended.
I didn't accuse you of anything. I said the people in this town have come to me because they believe they cannot get the answers they're seeking. And I can tell you now that, yes, we did in fact sit down, and you in fact did give me a series of references, which I went home and sat down in front of my computer and boneheaded through them and tried to sort this out. And the code of federal regulations, I went all through that, and I believe I got back with you and clearly said, "This is beyond me. I don't have the administrative and legal background to discern this. I invite anybody here to sit down and go read the code of federal regulations and tell me you understand it." And I specifically ask you if I could see or receive a legal read as to what we had, what actions had been taken. At no time did I accuse anyone of malfeasance or misconduct. I said I needed a question answered, and I could not find the answers in the references you gave me. You replied that you didn't have the authority to expend funds, town funds, to seek legal guidance. Subsequent to that, you said you had a conversation with both Jeanie and Mr. Woods here, and they had approved you seeking that legal guidance. Again, as I said, constituents in this town came to me repeatedly asking me, "What's going on? What does this mean? Why did this happen? How did this happen?" And I came to you and said, "How?" And you gave me information, and again, I came back and you said, "I don't understand this. This doesn't make sense to me." I worked through the process. I didn't just arbitrarily make any accusations of wrongdoing. I said, "I'm getting questions. I would like to answer those questions." That's what my job up here is, to represent and answer constituents' questions.
And so, back to the point. We are here tonight. We requested, I think, I will say, it is, in my eight years, I believe this is the only time I, at least it's the only time I'm aware of, that we have ever requested a legal opinion from our town council when it did not involve litigation. Like, it is not, this is not a usual thing to do. We actually didn't realize sort of what, even what the path was to make this, to make this public. So, because usually it's litigation, and just automatically, you're like, that's not, that's not going outside of executive session. So what we have done is talk with Merrill. We've gotten opinions from Merrill, and we've talked with Merrill about what we have to do to release this information. Individual Select Board members, as we know, have, we, we're part of a board, so there are some things we can do and many things we can't do as individuals. One of those is release privileged information. In order for us to waive privilege, and just want to be very clear, we're only waiving privilege on these two opinions, not, we're not, this is not unilateral. This is on these two specific opinions. In order to do that, we have to have a majority of the board vote to release those opinions. So that is the question, and that is what we should be focusing on, because that is the agenda item. So, any other discussion about whether we should release this information or not? Yes, Nancy?
Stu, could you just repeat what you said about a group of citizens brought their own designers and builders for the skateboard park?
That's correct. This was a project that was brought to us by a private entity that had suggested that they had an opportunity or they had an idea about a skate park. It was a, an idea that people in the community had told us through the ARPA list of priorities that a skate park was something that the community really desired. So now we have a public group of people, most of them from Bennington, saying, "We're interested in helping you do this." And they began a process on their own to bring this forward. We agreed through the Select Board to work with them. And so when they came to us, Grindline was their designer at that time. And so we began to work with Grindline, just, and the group of people, to do the design and to approach this board about moving forward with the project, which this board agreed to do.
And here's the problem. When the private group of people wanted the big skateboard park, they didn't want to go out and raise the $300,000. It got dumped on the town taxpayers.
I can't, I don't know whether they thought about that or not, Nancy.
Well, they should have thought about it. But my other concerns have to go to the public hearing. I had no idea until a few days after that meeting, that early in August, somebody posted a notice in the classified ads of the Bennington banner stating it was put in by the legislative body of this town. Well, we are the legislative body. I had no idea somebody posted that we were going to hold a public hearing. I had no idea somebody posted that we were going to hold a public hearing. I had no idea, no chance to read all the critical information about what that public hearing said. We should have had a right to see that. We should have been given it before it went in. We didn't even get it before the last meeting. I don't know of any state law or town policy that says when we're on the select board, we have to read the classified notices in the banner to know what our job is and to know when we're going to hold public hearings.
Yes, Shannon?
I'd like to reply to that, because that notice was put in, it's a boilerplate notice that comes from the Vermont Community Development Program through the state. They provide that notice. It's literally a template that we have to plug into for each public hearing. So, that is why it says that, and that's the same for every public hearing that is ever posted.
But Shannon, but did you put the notice in the paper? I don't know who put it in.
Yes, I sent the notice in.
Why didn't you make sure each of us on the board had a copy?
That is not required.
It's not required?
I'm sorry, point of order.
No, it's not.
But it was signed by the legislative-
It's in the paper.
So, yeah, right, okay. Sorry, I zoned out for a moment. I'm going to say, so, so question asked and answered. Going back, I think we, it is time for us to vote. I'm not hearing any, thank you, Shannon, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jeannie, I'm sorry.
This is not-
We were each elected by the people of Bennington. We are the legislative body. How can there be a public notice in the banner that most of us never saw?
There's a motion on the floor. I'd like to call-
She's speaking, Mr. Woods.
I'm sorry, we need to be civil, please.
She's speaking.
You know, there's something that goes with civility, and it's called accountability and transparency. If you have those three things, you can have great meetings.
Excuse me, Nancy, I was elected to this board as well.
Sorry?
Let me make it clear that I was also elected to this board.
And he has now called the question.
The question is, can we take this issue to a vote? We are here to discuss and vote whether or not the opinions should be released to the public following guidance from our attorney.
Did the chair and the vice chair know that that notice was in the banner and failed to tell the rest of us?
I do want to make a point to that. We actually have hired employees to do the work of the town for us, Nancy.
Ed?
So, again, we have-
You are the chair and the vice chair. How was it not your responsibility? To me, the notice, the meeting, was about the bombshell Shires dropped, that they're being taken over by Rutland County Housing. We know nothing about this group.
Point of order, nothing being discussed right now is actually relevant to the motion that's on the floor. Thank you, Tom. All we're supposed to be discussing right now is whether or not we agreed or not to release the opinions. That's all we can, all we can talk about right now. That's what the agenda item is. That's all we're allowed to talk about.
Is there a motion on the table?
There is a motion on the table. It's been seconded, and the, and the question's been called, so-
Unappointed discussion, though. Releasing this information, will it be subject to public discussion with this disclosed disclosure?
I would think that a public opinion, I am not a lawyer, so, Stu, I'm going to turn to you. If we have a legal opinion of what, I mean, it's not going to be an agenda item, because we have a legal opinion, and that is, and that is our attorney's opinion, and we are offering to share it. I mean, I will say, it may be embarrassing to one member of the select board who violated, violated several, several areas that, that-
Not embarrassing?
They ignore an official select board vote, VLCT procedure, and also open meeting law, and as a result, that is discussed in one of these, in one of these opinions, as well as potential remedies for that if it does not stop. So, we are not, I mean, in that context, maybe yes, but I think otherwise, these are two legal opinions, and so we'll release them. You know, if we vote to release them, but we have to vote to release them to do so. So, I'm, like, the question's already been called. All those in favor of releasing these two specific opinions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. All right, the ayes have it. All right. Next up is traffic calming measures. So, let me figure out where the stuff even is at this point. Oh, here. Yes, okay. So, traffic calming. So, I'm going to, going back to Sarah's comment earlier, we set 30, we've got two items back-to-back that are both discussion items, and what we hope to do was to spend 30 minutes on each one of those, so the, and that would include, on traffic calming, sharing what we've already, what staff and BRCRC are already up to, sort of what the scope, as we understand it, is, and sort of what our timelines are to take any action. So, we received the materials from, we all received the materials, and they're in the packet, from the Bennington County Regional Commission, from Mark Anders, who is, are you the senior transportation? You, yes, the senior transportation planner? Okay. And we thank you very much for that. Based on Mark's excellent presentation at the last meeting, here is what we heard, and I will say that staff were already working on this, I think as they walked out of the room. The goal of traffic calming measures is to increase safety in the community, particularly, as it relates to pedestrian and cycling communities. Looking at long-term impact, long-term impacts, the most useful data, as we understand it, that we should be collecting is speed and crash information, pedestrian and bike use, and also school and hospital zones. And Mark, you're going to be up first to add anything that needs to be added. The intent is to look at short-term actions, such as better signage, including speed limit signs, stop signs, yield signs, reflector signs, and that those would be collected through our information, our information portal that's already available on the, on the website, as far as I understand it. Jonah, I'm sort of looking at you for that. The medium-range actions might be things like designing one or two pilot projects with enhanced traffic calming measures, and then the third thing that we want to do is create a policy that would guide further work around traffic calming measures. So, what's already in the works is town staff has set up a way for public suggestions to be included, and particularly helpful are things like, and we've already, I've already gotten several, I'm sure other people have as well, you know, I think there should be a stop sign at the corner of X and Y streets, and here's why. Or, you know, having a speed limit sign as you enter X street would be really helpful, because you don't know how fast you should be going. So, those sorts of things. And I'm thinking, Jonah, maybe if we already have some, if we can send them to you via email and just say, "Traffic calming suggestions," that can get that going. And then, and then, so, staff are working on public, a way that the public can put those suggestions in and a way to advertise that. They're looking at the cost of asphalt for traffic humps and tables, which apparently is not as inexpensive as I imagined, and town staff are developing a list of the top 10 speed areas, and that's from the Bennington Police Department's data. Then, on the BRCRC side, we understand that they are looking at the cost of permanent speed detectors and also temporary speed carts, and they are looking, they're going to provide us with crash data for high-crash areas, and also they're going to share traffic calming policies that are already in use and, and working well. So, according to Stu, the data will need to be pulled together by October 28th, and the select board will need to make a decision by November 11th if we want to make, for budgetary recommendations, okay? So, so, you know, the faster we can pull this data, so this is going to be an ongoing conversation to figure out what we can afford and how we want to do it, but we will have to make decisions by November 11th. So, the thought was to use the time tonight to look at what's missing, what doesn't, what we're thinking matters, doesn't matter, and anything else. And so, the thought was to start with Mark, and just let us know if there, if you're thinking there are additional things we should be, types of information we should be collecting or other things we should be thinking about, and then make it a discussion in the select board, and then move to the community. So, I think for all of us, if we can not repeat what other people have said, that'll, that'll keep us to the 30 minutes. So, Mark, I'm going to ask you if you could come up and just give us any sense of, of whether it feels like we're on the right.
Yeah, thank, so, I'm Mark Anders, senior transportation planner at the Bennington County Regional Commission, and since the last time, I have done some research about what other towns do, and I looked specifically at stuff that was available on the internet that was a little similar to Bennington, you know, like northern New England, New England towns. A lot of cities have traffic calming programs, but those aren't as relevant to us. So, I looked at Wakefield, Mass., Essex Junction, Vermont, and Lebanon, New Hampshire, and all of their policies are different, but they do all have some common elements. They all have a written policy. They also, they all have a procedure for implementing the policy that's spelled out, and they all have a committee to kind of handle these requests. You know, they call them different things, like Wakefield, Mass. has a traffic advisory committee, Essex Junction has like a safety committee, so they're the ones that review the requests and kind of get into the weeds on all of the requests. And then they all, all the towns say that the number of requests kind of exceed the budget for the towns, so they have to be selective, and they all have a system for ranking the projects, and that's based on traffic volume, it's based on context, so is there a school nearby, it's based on crash data, and they're all a little bit different, but, you know, I think there's, there's themes that emerge, you know, crashes are bad, speeding and speed. A lot of them use the 80, number of miles per hour over the speed limit of the 85th percentile speed, for example. That's a little bit in the weeds, but, so I think that's kind of the, my recommendation is to focus on, you know, getting a draft policy procedure, how you're going to rank the projects, and maybe who's going to review it, because it's a lot of detail and a lot of work, frankly. And I think the policy, you know, like, some towns have really long policies, like Wakefield, Wakefield's is like 25 pages long, and some places have like two-page policies, so I think probably simple is good to start. Something that everybody can understand is, is good.
Mark, have you had a conversation with any of the towns that have policies about how well their policies work?
Yes, I've been emailing with the Public Works Director in, in Lebanon, New Hampshire, and, you know, he said that basically the traffic calming, the speed tables they put in have been popular with citizens, not as popular with snowplow drivers. So, that was, that was basically, you know, basically what he said. I haven't talked to him on the phone, but I've been emailing back and forth with him, and I'm going to, I'm going to go up there in October and check out speed tables. I have to be up there anyway, so.
Okay. Good.
And then the other thing we did was had somebody in my office kind of make a crash map of town, just to sort of show where all the, where a lot of the crashes are, and because that just came up last time. VTREN's actually has something called the High Crash Location Program. They have this sort of complicated process where they record all the crashes, and they have a formula for figuring out where the severe crashes are, based on, you know, how many injury crashes were there, fatalities, property damage only, and then, of course, if you just do that, then you're just going to map the streets with the most traffic, because that's where the most crashes are, so it also accounts for traffic volume. And so, we put together a map that shows all the sections that VTREN's identified. The problem is, they stopped doing this in 2016, so the data's a little bit old. So, I had somebody kind of take the more recent data and make a map, so we can send that around to the select board for comments, and, you know, frankly, we're trying to make this up as we go along, so if the map is not clear, or you want edits, happy to, we're trying, we're working through this. We're learning with you, so.
Okay. And I'm wondering whether, I mean, I think we would certainly like to see it, it could go in the, it could go in the packet for next time as part of the minutes, but I'm wondering, it probably makes most sense for you to work with maybe Dan and Jonah to see if this looks like it's something that is useful to individuals without a whole lot of explanation, and then we could put it, we can put it on the website. If it looks like it is still a work in progress, then maybe we'll look at it, and it'll be included in the packet, but not loaded up. So, okay, but that's, that's great.
Yep.
Was it not a useful program? Why did they stop?
It was a very useful program. I'm not sure why they stopped. It's a good question.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, are there, so it sounds like the kinds of things that staff understood we needed to collect are the same things you're, is what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think we're on the right path.
Okay, all right.
You know, and then I was to, you know, I, I don't know who would, if the board is interested in a committee, you know, I'd imagine like somebody from the police department, somebody from Public Works, you know, maybe somebody from BRCRC, somebody from the select board, I don't know. I don't, I don't know who makes up the, the committees in those towns. I haven't gotten that far, but I would imagine that something like that.
It would be, yeah, it would be useful. I think that would be worth seeing what, what we, whether it fits under any existing boards or commissions, or whether we're adding yet another group. I just, I worry about how thin we stretch, particularly the police department.
Yep, understood.
But, yeah, so I, I think, I think exploring that, though-
I also think whatever mechanism we use should allow for public participation.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's helpful, and particularly the rank, because if you're ranking projects-
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I should also say, the, so basically the way this towns do it is, somebody, a citizen makes a written request for a traffic calming project. The committee looks at, the policies of the towns usually have a basic screening process, like, you know, for example, the speeds have to be over a certain amount, or, I can read a couple of the screening things here. Oops, sorry, dropping papers. I don't have my reading glasses, so. Oh, so, for example, you know, on roads, it only works for if, you know, if a town has a policy that you can't put a speed table or a speed hump on a road with this more than 30 miles an hour, so, you know, maybe a citizen might not realize that, so that would sort of get thrown out. And then, next step would be a petition, so most towns require approval by two-thirds of the property owners on a street, and then if a committee accepts, accepts that, then town staff investigate it, do a speed study, et cetera. And if a speed table installation is approved, it is placed on a priority list, installation will take place if funding is available. If a request for a speed table removal follows the same procedure, so if, you know, nobody likes it, people want to take it out, you just kind of do the procedure in reverse, so.
It sounds like it could take a while.
Yeah, I think it, no, it doesn't have to be a super complicated, I mean, the ranking stuff is pretty straightforward. I mean, we can do it pretty easily, so.
All right, all right, okay.
I'm here if you have any more questions.
Okay, all right, so, open to board discussion. Anyone have questions for Mark or thoughts about how best to proceed here? Yes, Nancy?
Yeah, for decades, it's been pretty well-known that Monument Avenue, East Road, South Stream Road have always had a massive problem with speeding, and I, I think we should kind of focus on these roads that have had it. We had many people from Monument Avenue speak. They gave us a petition- We had many people from Monument Avenue speak, they gave us a petition last meeting. A couple of years ago, the citizens on the East Road, they signed a petition and came in and spoke, because the board had been asked to raise the posted speed limit, which never made any sense. They wanted the posted speed limit raised on the South Stream Road, and the police chief shut that down because of all the accidents. Who did the traffic studies that I read a couple of years ago on the East Road as to how far cars were going?
That actually was this year, it was about six months ago.
No, this, this was for the East Road a couple of years ago.
Okay, we just had it on our agenda within the last six months. And the East Road residents came, we were, the question was whether we should raise the speed limit based on the traffic data that actually BRCRC had collected. But that was within the last six months, so we might as well focus on that one, because it's more recent, it might have happened a couple of years ago.
But we already know two roads that have had major problems for decades, and South Stream Road also. I would think we would focus on those three roads?
Well, we might for pilots, but that's what we're trying to flesh out right now, is just sort of what it is we want to think about. So, we do have some data on some big roads already, and that, so that, that might be where we focus a pilot, but we have to have enough data to be able to support that decision, because there is a cost that goes along with that.
Yep.
And Stu, do we only have one sign that the town owns that we can put out, so people can see how fast they're going when they approach?
Yes, we have one, one mobile sign.
Why don't we have that out on a street for two weeks and keep moving it around, so people start to get more aware? I mean, we have this issue all over town.
Well, we do attempt to move it from place to place.
So, it's out someplace in Bennington every couple of weeks, and then it gets moved?
I don't know that it's out every pla, in someplace every couple of weeks, but we do attempt to move it around based on the complaints and the issues that are brought to the town's notice, and that, and to the PD's notice.
I can tell you that I have some experience with this.
Because many times, they place the sign, based on what information they have.
And, and what I didn't know until I asked all these questions was, the use of that sign is based on season, because it's in the way of our snowplows, and I think the functionality of it suffers in extreme cold.
That may be.
So, so it may be a shorter season of use of that, that's the portable speed cart that we're talking about, that we only have one of.
Yeah, I haven't seen it around town all summer, so.
I haven't either. Good point.
It's up by the hospital right now on Monument Ave.
And the big issue that I read is getting the height right on these speed humps. Have you driven over any, can you go 25 without getting thrown all over the car, or?
Well, speed humps are a little more aggressive than speed tables, so speed humps, you can go about 25 miles an hour, and speed tables, you can go about 30 miles an hour.
And Lebanon has which, the speed hump?
Speed, they have speed tables.
Okay, I'll look when I go up in a couple of weeks.
Yep.
Any, so, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Because I want to also make sure we have time for the community to ask questions.
Speed tables, after your last meeting here, I had to go down to Connecticut, and I ended up on a street that actually, you mentioned they have to come in series, and there's one street in about a two-block area had four of them. And it was pretty impressive, the effect they have on, on, on speed. Not that I would speed, no, 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 not someone else. But, yeah, this particular area, I grew up in this area, and I always had problems with speeding. And now they've, they've actually put, in the middle of the block, traffic circles, rotaries, which still didn't slow people down. So, now they've put these speed tables, which seem to slow them down before they get to the traffic circles. So, yeah, I was duly impressed that, I know how you mentioned they have to come in series, and that this, this trick thing, I had four of them, I encountered in about a two-block period, between the rotaries.
Yeah, yeah, there, more and more towns are using them.
Wow.
Yeah, they're serious.
Serious, very serious.
That's where we used to drag race runners in high school.
Not anymore.
Well, thank you, that's, that's useful.
Okay, so, anyone else from the board? I see we have some, some people who are eager to ask questions from the community. All right.
I could like that, good question.
So, I'm going to ask, so Mark, why don't you come over here, or either, yeah, so just use the two mics. Yeah, so, if you would like to go to the mic, that, that way Cat TV gets to pick you up, and that, and we don't have to worry about COVID, spreading COVID or anything.
Oh, okay, no, I, when we...
Oh, please identify yourself again.
Oh, I'm Tamia Gastio, and I live here in Bennington. When you mentioned about having to move, and I have seen your, your little speed, what do you call it?
Cart.
The, to show the speed, I was just thinking...
That's actually the police department's.
I, I go to Shaftesbury, or go through Lower Shaftesbury, or I'm not sure what it is, but anyhow, they have one, and it's up on a telephone pole or a pole, and it works all year round. I've never noticed that they took it down. Couldn't that be done here?
Different kind, but yes.
Yes, and so what we're trying to do is figure out how, how much things cost, what we can afford, and then figure out where best to put these various devices, because they all cost money. So, we're doing this before budget season, so we can look at, at what we could put in the budget.
Just a suggestion.
I, I love the Shaftesbury one, every single time, I'm like, oh, okay, yeah.
Not that you were speeding.
Not that I was speeding.
I was, but.
Other comments, questions?
I have one, but nobody else has.
Okay.
On Monument.
One second, and please introduce yourself.
Mike, how did this man, this gentleman Mark, get funded to do this?
To do what?
The study that he did on Monument?
We get, we get funding through the Vermont Agency of Transportation.
So, you got paid to do your neighborhood study for your street? You got paid to do that?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I've been doing this for, I've been working, doing transportation planning for over 13 years, I think, in Vermont, in 17 towns, and this is the first project I've ever done on Monument Ave, so.
I know, I'm not questioning that, but I just want to know Monument Ave.
Because, because a bunch of people approached me and asked me about it.
I think in all fairness, there was a outreach from the public before this board, and, and then after an accident that was very serious.
They came to this board and asked first?
I'm not sure about the timing of it, Mike, but I just want to clear that that, that community came to this board.
Because I live on Gage Street, and let me tell you, they don't even stop at the stop signs half the time, especially after dark.
Yeah.
And they rip all the way up through.
Yeah.
The other thing I'll mention, the other thing I'll mention, Mike, is the, that stretch of Monument Ave is one of the few stretches of roads in Bennington that is on the state high crash location. So, I kind of looked at that, the residents came to me and said, oh, this is really a problem, and then, is it really a problem? And then I looked at that map, and yeah, sure enough, it was on there, so.
I'm not against what you're doing up at Monument, I actually am for it. I'm for it in the town, on Gage Street, and any other streets like that. Like I said earlier about this calming effect, we need to do more thought process all the way up to Benmont, until we do a study on what businesses are going to be hurt by it that are existing, and what businesses may come into that area. Because as you all know, we need to do something to lower the taxes, and we do not want to hurt Benmont Ave if new development can be built there and bring tax revenue in. You have a business on Northside Drive, Mr. Woods. I would like Northside Drive, some of it, to come up to Benmont, to be closer to downtown, so that downtown may reap the benefit of Benmont Ave, more businesses, commercial, residential, anything.
I've been saying the same thing for 20 years, Mike, about the connection, you're absolutely right. Let me just say for what it's worth, that Gage Street is in the, some of the comments that we've seen, so it's already on the topic of discussion.
But I don't want, I mean, I don't want to slow down here, but I don't want those cars getting a speed bump and going into my front door, because my house is kind of close to the street.
Understood.
And there's a few of you on this board that would probably like to see that happen. And I know who you are. Thank you.
I do think, so, so I've just added a bullet, which is looking at potential impact of traffic calming measures in an area which I'm going to hope will generally be positive, but who knows?
But I think the point that Mike makes is that the impact should be looked at, whether it's negative or positive, and then can the negative be mitigated?
Yeah, so, so we've added, so we've added that, so thank you. Hi.
Hello, sir. It's Maria Corrales, Bennington, Vermont.
Please, please speak into the mic.
Maria Corrales, Bennington, Vermont. Regarding that crash query tool that you were talking about, that ended in 2010, and the police reports are not always complete, because there are people that just won't call the police. So, may I suggest that you call the National Association of Insurance, NAIC, they have reports that they generate for all insurance companies, they have this huge database. And maybe you can get accurate information, whether there's a lot of traffic accidents in Monument or Gage.
Yeah, it's a good point, and that, there's, that query tool's a little bit wonky, like, you know, sometimes they'll call a crash, Monument Street, Monument, sometimes there are errors, so I've gotten the hang of using the query tool, but that's a good suggestion about the insurance data.
Maria, can you give us that again?
So, the query tool he was looking at was the crash query tool, which is Vermont Agency of Transportation, and it did end in 2010. But he couldn't get in through to NAIC, which is the National Association of Insurance Commissioners, and they have a national database.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Maria.
Great. Any other questions on this topic for right now? Seeing none, I think what, so what we'll do is keep this as a reoccurring agenda item, and share our information as we get it, and, and that will, that will encourage additional questions. So, thank you very much, Mark, for coming back tonight. All right, okay, so then, next up is the, oh, next up is the online commenting protocol. And we had originally thought this was going to be a first reading, but I think it's actually more a first, a first discussion. At the last meeting, we agreed to explore whether there was a way for members of the public who are unable to attend meetings in person, to provide meaningful comments through a town portal, so that both the Select Board and the public would reliably be able to see those. And I think we all saw the, the, actually very comprehensive article that Jim Tharian wrote, that confirmed that, from Cat TV Executive Director Lisa Byer, that moving away from comments on Facebook is, is in compliance with the law. So, Jonah, I see you're standing there, I just want to make sure that...
If you don't need me to, I'd be happy to sit down.
Well, I think let's, yeah, I think let's, let's look, I think we're going to have, I think you're going to be a resource in the same way Mark was. I think, you know, this issue, as I think many of us now know, started a discussion about the use of comments, Facebook comments on Cat TV, that the public generally does not see, and does not often, and often is in violation of our own town communication policy. So, we all received, and the public all received, right, this was in the public packet? Stuart, this was, the comments were in the public packet? Okay. So, the Select Board and the public received copies of the Cat TV Facebook comments from June 10th through August 26th, which is six meetings, or three months of Cat TV Facebook comments. I think Jonah also put together a really excellent summary page that looks at the data, including Facebook views, total number of comments, total number of individuals, number of hidden comments, and the number of individuals associated with those hidden comments.
Just to take, I apologize, but that data table is provided by Cat TV?
Oh, okay, great.
Because we don't have any of that information that was all provided by her.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, okay, thank you, Cat TV. All right, so the summary data is from Cat TV, and then, and I hope, I understand this took quite a bit of time to compile and copy and disseminate, so I'm hoping that everybody, everybody read that. The one thing that I think is helpful, and this is actually spurred by Jim's, Jim Tharian's examination of the July 22nd meeting, where he found that three-quarters of the comments were actually, came from two peoples, so that 133 of the 177 comments, approximately, actually were generated by two people that were basically having a back and forth. So, I looked at the comments that we, that were shared with us, and looked at the top four people commenting on each one of them. And if one looks at the June 10th, June 10th of Cat TV Facebook comment compilation, there were 78 total comments, there were nine individuals that commented, and 85% of the comments came from four people. If one looks at the June 24th meeting, there were 171 comments with nine people commenting, 86% of those comments were from four people. I did not look at the hidden comments, but I realized later on that I probably should have, because they only hide the comments like after the meetings, so they're up for a couple of days, but, so this only includes the ones that remained public. At the July 8th meeting, I only had access to 183 of the 234 comments that were made. They were made by 13 people, and four people made 82% of those comments. In the July 22nd meeting, of the 157 comments that I could read and hear, there were 23 people that commented, but 83% of the comments came from four people. The August is a little better. The first meeting in August, there were only 17 comments made by seven people, and two people made 60% of those. And then, on the most recent comment, which was a Facebook meeting, which was August 26th, there were 88 comments made by 21 individuals, and 62% of those were by four individuals. So, we clearly are seeing that there are people that are sort of monopolizing our use of, of Facebook. I think what we wanted to do, and this, and this might be where you get to stand back up, Jonah, is Jonah has provided us with something that I, for me, feels more like a white paper, it's sort of, here's the problem, and here's some possible solutions. And I think if we look at the possible solution, that's, that's sort of the, the beginning of a protocol. Is that, does that feel accurate to you?
Sure, so would you like me to just introduce the protocol slash white paper?
I think, what if we look at the comment, what if we, why don't you explain what you're proposing as a potential solution?
Well, if it's okay, you did a great job outlining the comments, but if it's all right with you, I'd like to describe the current situation and how those comments are stored, would that be okay?
Sure, absolutely, oh, absolutely.
And this is just quoting from, okay. So, just so people understand the situation from which these comments are arising. And I'll just read to you from this, it's pretty brief. "Select Board meetings are recorded by Cat TV. A recorded version of the meeting is saved to Cat TV's account on youtube.com, and that is what is linked to from the town's website. There are currently no comments on the Cat TV YouTube-recorded videos that I reviewed, but comments are allowed. They're also streamed live on the Cat TV Facebook page, that is what we just heard in outline of what those comments consisted of. Obviously, people can comment there. At some point, as, after the meeting is held, Cat TV staff may review the Cat TV Facebook comments and videos and remove some. Saved versions of that Facebook video and remaining comments are available on the Cat TV Facebook page, but nowhere else." So, the, the two main issues that are, that arise out of this, one is that people could imagine that when they're commenting on the Facebook Live feed, that they're making a public comment, when in fact, they are not. And the other is that we run the risk of accidentally creating a public record by mistake. And what I mean by that is, for the first point... And what I mean by that is, for the first point, not actually a public comment, simply because those comments until today have not been seen or recorded by the town in any fashion. So people, forgivably, under thinking they were making a public comment in the past, simply were not. But they are now in that public record because of this, at least for those three months that we were given from Cat TV. One issue that I personally have is that it gives the appearance that the town is not listening, when in fact, the reason is because we have not seen these comments before. The other point about creating a public record by mistake, the issue there is if any elected official or one of the 40-plus people that have been appointed to serve on a commission, board, or committee, if they were to answer a question on that Facebook feed, that would inadvertently create a public record, which the town would then be liable for. So the problem there is, we have no control over those comments, no way to record them, but we are potentially liable for them. Now, it's important to mention then, that second point, that's perhaps academic in the sense that there was nothing that I saw in those three months that where someone accidentally created a public record. But it is a liability that the town should be aware of and consider. The suggestion is pretty simple. Move the comments off the Cat TV Facebook Live feed and provide a way for people to officially provide their public comment, so that it's recorded and seen by town officials. The simplest way to do that is with a link to a comment form, which would be on the town website, that is clearly displayed on the Cat TV feed. And that's it. That would resolve both of those issues. So the answer is potentially pretty simple. Does that outline, is that what you're hoping for?
So can you walk us through?
Can I ask for one point of clarity?
Sure. Oh, go ahead.
I just want to make one point of clarity. Thank you for that, Jonah. You made a point about controlling comments, and I want the public to understand that the goal here is to comply with the law. So public commenting, although it should fit into the town's adopted communication policy, which it doesn't at this point because we don't have the ability to make sure that we're conforming with the law. So I just wanted to raise that as a point of clarity.
Jonah, if you have a moment. How many of these comments that are of concern appeared on town social media or town sites? And the follow-up is, the Cat TV sites are covered under Rule 8.000 for the state Vermont Access Network? How do we, meaning we at the town, justify stepping into an area that by some of their own instructions specifically prohibit municipal or governmental screening or controlling of comments on social media sites of these public access networks?
Let me -- I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but let me try to answer it in this way. First of all, how do we do social media? According to our communication policy, which was reviewed and approved by council and approved by the Select Board, this is your policy. Item 1, Section A, "The following social media platforms are hereby designated as government speech forums for the Town of Bennington: Facebook and Instagram." And then, Item 1, Section C, "The purpose of using Town of Bennington's social media accounts is to serve as a government speech forum, to provide residents with community information and important notices, and to communicate directly with community members in real time regarding critical incidents, traffic closures, natural disasters, evacuations, and other matters of public safety. The town does not use social media accounts to solicit input or to answer requests for information." So that, by having that policy, that protects us from that issue of control of public records. And regarding the second piece of that question about screening, that's really, I'm not an expert on that, so that's something I would have to research. But I think I recall from reading Jim's article that there's, they determined, and maybe Jim can answer this, but--
I think Lisa's quoted in the article.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Jim didn't make it up.
And actually, I hesitate to say because I don't remember the article perfectly, but as Jeannie said as part of the introduction, they determined that what they were doing in this question of whether or not to show comments is a legal thing for them to do. I don't know the specific rule you're referring to, but I would say that there are many, many, many places on Facebook where the public has full freedom of speech. But for the Town of Bennington, on our social media platforms, it's really a government speech forum, and that's the main purpose of it. And I feel like I'm missing something in that answer. So what did I forget?
Jonah, can I quote Lisa's comment? "We consulted legal counsel and confirmed what we already knew, that the comments on our Facebook page are not protected speech. We are free to allow comments or not allow comments."
Okay. Here's the crux of the matter in my mind. Cat TV is over there. Bennington is over here. We have our rules and we have our policies. In my opinion, the Town of Bennington has no business inflicting slash enforcing their policies on a private entity that is not part of the town governance. Now, I've read all those comments, and if the idea of saying, gee, those are some really nice shoes I saw that guy wearing during the meeting, you're right. In fact, there's a lot of back and forth banter. I scrolled through it, looking for specific questions or comments where said individual said, hey, I wonder why and if the town is doing this, or how they are accomplishing this. I seem to have missed any dialogue or questioning from the public. I've seen a lot of interactions between people back and forth on various points. But the number-one point in my mind, because I'm maybe not too smart, is there's them and there's us. And the Town of Bennington, in my opinion, has no business pressuring, forcing any private entity to accept our own internal policies.
Clark, if I could address that, please. I have a pretty good understanding of this. Cat TV is a vendor of the towns, and so we contract with Cat TV to pay them to cover and air our meetings. As their customer, they have said that with our instructions, they would follow our instructions on this topic, which is what led to tonight's discussion.
Would you mind showing me in the contract where that is?
Let me finish. There's no, so there's no us imposing ourselves on their business practices. As they are covering meetings that we contract with them to do, they would follow guidelines from this board in terms of following the communication policy that this board adopted.
Again, could you please show me where in the contract it says that, please? Here's the copy of the contract.
I saw it on your Facebook page, as a matter of fact. And I don't have time to read it now. It's not a single item in their contract, as many other items wouldn't be single items.
Again. If I may jump in.
We've heard from the executive director.
Okay. And I think our town manager would like to speak.
Yes, if I may. In their contract with us, they offer a number of services, Clark. The YouTube, the Facebook, those are all services they offer. And I'm not sure which paragraph it is, might be paragraph four. We do not have to avail ourselves of all those services. And that's all that gives us the right to not avail ourselves of the services that they are offering. At one time, Cat TV just recorded our meetings. Now they have these other platforms that they are offering to their customers to provide additional platforms for our meetings to go out to, YouTube, Facebook. Those were all not part of the original deal. These are offerings that they now have. And I have talked with Ms. Byer, and she agrees that we can decide not to avail ourselves of those offerings if we choose not to. That's fine if we choose not to. But if I go on Cat TV and Cat TV is producing an item and there's information on it that I care to exchange back and forth between other people monitoring Cat TV, that is not the Town of Bennington saying this.
No.
That is Cat TV. I still remain interested in seeing a document between Cat TV and the Town of Bennington that authorizes us to issue these mandates to them. Now, you say it's a service, isn't it? Well, again--
It's a contract, Clark.
I'm looking at the contract, and I'm offering for you to show me where in this contract those provisions are.
I'd be glad to do that if you wish.
And while he does that, I would just like to interject that the concern is not that we prevent the comments, but ensure that they're not lost. Because right now, the problem is people commenting or making public comment on the Facebook Live feed is essentially lost. So again, just to be clear, we don't want to prevent comment. We want to actually start making sure that those are being properly recorded.
So what you're recommending is that we move the comment link or box--
Correct.
--to the town rather than Cat TV. Cat TV is no longer, it's not time for the public to speak. So that Cat TV would still provide the services, guys, it's really hard. Cat TV would still provide the services of covering the meetings live that they do now and pre-recorded for the other ones. They would still provide Facebook and YouTube to us, which gets a larger audience, which I think is really important. But in all those cases, if somebody wanted to offer a comment, what you're suggesting is there would be a dedicated link--
Correct. There should be a way for them to do that. And the simplest way is to have a dedicated link for them to make those comments.
On the town office, on the town office, on the town website. And then, that would be, that would become an official document. We would see it in the minutes.
Correct.
Because we don't see, I mean, we're not on social media during a meeting. So we don't see any of the comments that are made until two days later if we go on Cat TV.
Well, until today, none of those comments have ever been a public record until the three months that we were provided.
Right. And so we can't, and so it would be, I mean, it's not as effective because we're making decisions in real time now. So we won't see those comments until the next meeting. But at least we will know, and, you know, in something like traffic calming, it would actually be very helpful because it's another way for people to provide comment to us while they're watching the meeting. Something occurs to them, they can share that information, and we see it along with the rest of, along with the minutes from this part of the meeting at the next meeting. Is there any complication? What are the complications in terms of making the switch from your perspective?
Well, I've consulted with Cat TV on the technical aspect, and they did give the caveat that how Facebook organizes its platform changes on a pretty frequent basis. So I would caution us against having a specific language such as, the link will be in this specific spot. But the two places are in the description, which would be a live clickable link that they could follow, and on screen, on the bottom third of the screen, where currently it says Bennington Select Board and the date. Add a line that says to comment, benningtonvt.org-comment. And that would give two places, one being very visible up front and the other being a clickable link on the page that we could implement right away or at the will of the Select Board. Because ultimately, this is your decision and how to proceed.
And that would allow people that are watching on television to have a way to comment, which they don't currently have, right? Only, yeah, you have to be on social media in order to comment now or show up at the meeting. So, yeah, I think we just need to be really careful that people don't think we're reading their comments in real time either. Because we can't do that. Okay, that's helpful. Other questions from the board, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, I do have, no.
No, we're still at the board.
I have other questions. You keep referencing communicating with the board, comments to the board, submitting that form. He mentioned, from what I read, there's a lot of people that are just chatting back and forth between each other. They're not communicating to the board.
Right.
If I want to talk to somebody about color of their shoes or whether or not they enjoyed the game before the board meeting, or I'm going to leave the board meeting, what gives us the authority to step in and say, well, you guys can't communicate like that between each other?
I think they all have Facebook.
Well, I'm thinking since on the Cat TV Facebook site, where I see these people communicating with each other. I don't see any questions directed to us.
Okay. I think the answer to that question is that the only reason that Cat TV Facebook feed is there for anybody to comment on is because we are paying Cat TV to film us. So it is not, it is not, it is not that they have Facebook open all the time. Like, when they're showing a movie, I don't know that they have Facebook, I don't know the answer to this. But when they're showing Sherlock Holmes on Saturday afternoon, is there a Facebook feed that people are chatting back and forth about the color of their shoes and whether they liked the film or not? I don't, I don't think so. I think this is a service that we, that came along with having our, having a Facebook presence. So it is a paid-for service. It's not, it's not that there's like a Facebook all the time on Cat TV that you can just sign up for. So this is specific, we're not trying to stop Cat TV having Facebook chat if they want. What we're saying is that for these meetings, we need a way to get, to reliably get people's comments and make it part of the public record.
Comments regards town business? Or comments regards people's opinion of what is transpiring here?
Well, whatever they, whatever they want to comment on. But it becomes a part of the public record. And I think as Jonah indicated, until tonight, all these comments that have been coming in have never been part of the public record. It's only now that they are because we included them in this meeting packet. But, you know, we're looking at comments that were made three months ago, sometimes for the first time.
The question remains, these comments, how are they germane to the public record? They're not asking for our opinion or endorsing a course of action. It's people discussing their opinions or what their observations are.
Well, I mean, and that will be what it is, but in the same, if, I think traffic calming seems to me like the most logical example right now, that if somebody's watching, was watching this, and they heard Mark talking about traffic calming measures and policies in other places, and they had a thought, they knew, they just moved here from Chester, Minnesota, and know that there was a great program there, a comment that they could make would be, hey, here's another town to look at.
You're absolutely right. That person is communicating an idea or a condition to us for town action. That's them approaching us as their representative, saying, hey, I'm aware of this. What do you think? Versus, gee, they're running kind of long-winded tonight. Now, I don't think they need to submit a form to us saying that just their general comments or opinion statements need to be cleared by us and made a matter of public record.
If, well, if they make it as part of a public meeting, it actually should be.
Well, I hope Nancy's recording some of the whispering out here in the back of the room then, because during the meeting, people are talking, and that's not being captured. But it's not germane to what we're doing up here.
So I want to make, I want to make sure that we all get to say what we want to say and also that the public gets to make their comments, because I think there's several people that are really anxious to comment. Any other questions, any other comments or questions from us? I'm also trying to keep us on that 30-minute timeline. Any other questions or comments from us?
Just want to comment, this is a draft protocol. I think this will be going through at least two other steps. So I do have thoughts on this, but I'm going to hold them. I think there's a lot of people I've been hearing from that are not fans of any of this. And I'm, I've been hearing from people that don't want any of this, and I have that mindset as well. So I'm going to hold back a lot of my thoughts at this time.
Okay, great. And, yeah, I would say we don't have a protocol yet. So the next will be the first reading of a protocol. Okay. So any other, can we move to public comments from the public? Does that work? Okay. All right. Who, all right. Maria, you have been hopping up and down your chair. So please, you go first, and then Jeannie, you're second.
Okay. Maria Corrales, Bennington, Vermont. So Facebook is the platform. Cat TV is the service provider, and you're the client. But the problem is that platform is, people have profiles that are private. Some of them hide their names, some of them wanted it. Now you want to move that platform to the town, where you have access to their URL and names and everything? names and everything? Is that what you're saying? Because the, the reason why it's on that platform is because it's wide. And you're saying, no, we should put it on the town website because people who watch TV, who? Who watches TV? Everyone with a cellphone or laptops. So I don't understand why you want to move it to the town.
Are you suggesting we should?
What would be the purpose of moving the platform to the town when the audience is so wide on Facebook? Just so you can have more control? I don't understand that. Because if someone makes an erroneous comment or bantering back and forth, I hope you know that you, all they have to do is slide. All they have to do is slide. It's that simple, slide. So, so when you're, when you're on, on the live event and let's say people are bantering back and forth, and I don't want to see what they're saying, all I have to do is slide. I don't want to see them.
So can I, so can, you raise a very interesting point that I actually hadn't thought about because open meeting law does require that people are making comments, that they need to.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You make a very interesting point that I hadn't really thought about, but open meeting law does require that people state their name and town of residence. In terms of audience, if one looks at that chart of the, the audience, the Facebook views, which I assume is the audience.
What?
That, that, we, we, Cat TV gave us those numbers and they are between 2,100 and 5,300. Is that right? Am I reading that right in terms of Facebook views? Is that what that means?
It's the number of people.
That's the number of people. So we are extremely happy to have Facebook audience because it means that people that used to live in Bennington or on vacation someplace else can tune in. So we're extremely, we're not at all interested in reducing the number of, of viewers. But you are right, that open meeting law does require in law that people identify themselves when they make a comment. So, yeah.
I also hear from the public that it's distracting that there are comments being made when they're trying to watch a meeting on Facebook. Just another view of.
Is distracting what? Excuse me? Say that again.
While you're viewing a meeting on Facebook with your, particularly using your phone or a tablet, the comment pops in, in front of you and so you've lost the screen that the meeting is on.
But as I said, all you have to do is slide that person's comment.
Okay. I'm making a point, Maria. Thank you.
Then you're dated because it's very, very common. People look at these live events and then just slide, slide, slide.
We do have an older demographic.
I want to pay attention to stupid comment.
Okay.
I want to pay attention to what you have to say.
So Maria, that, your, your, your point is well, is well taken. Thank you very much. Jenny, please identify yourself and town of residence.
Sorry, this is really too. All right. Jenny Dewer, Pownell. And when I read what I have to say, you'll understand why I'm speaking at the Bennington Select Board even though I live in Pownell. I believe the four people are all the same that you were mentioning in your stats, correct? And they're not talking about shoes. Their comments are often rather vicious. There are multiple ways to watch the Cat TV video, both live and afterwards. You have television, you have YouTube, and you have the Cat TV website where you can watch anywhere so that you don't have to be in the town of Bennington. I know on television, it's local, but on Facebook, if you have this huge audience, they can switch over and start watching it on the Cat TV website if that's publicized. Facebook is not a requirement, as you said. Allowing comments is like, on that, is like letting people converse in full volume in this room. It is just as distracting when you're watching it on Facebook live as it is in here when people are laughing in the back after saying that we should be respectful of each other and chatting with each other. In my opinion, disallowing comments is not against the First Amendment as people have every opportunity to come in and speak in person. Instead of hiding behind aliases, one of those four people referenced by you is an alias. He's not even, he or she is not even identifying who they are, but they, the things they say are foul. As well as reach out on the town website. Plenty of ways that people can comment. There are many Facebook groups where people can be as snarky as they like and they can join those Facebook groups and say whatever they want about whoever they want and people can choose not to go see them. But we're trying to watch a live meeting. This matters to me as I have been written about in those comments, most recently by a woman whom I have never met. I am a private citizen and these comments were not only a misrepresentation of a brief discussion I had with a complete stranger on social media that she initiated that caused great strife in my work. But now she's still writing about it a year and a half later on these comments and mentioning me. That's not okay. And I asked Cat TV to remove it and it hasn't been removed. So I posted the entire conversation that she and I had. It's in your packets. So you can all look at, see who that, who I'm talking about and what I'm talking about. Sorry, this, I'm quite emotional about that because that caused a lot of problems, as you know. So, and also this had nothing to do with town business or the meeting that the comments were so supposedly about. So this was in a meeting and she was referencing me and it had nothing to do with what was going on in the room. I would hope that Cat TV would either edit out the junk, turn off live commenting altogether, or stop running it live for Facebook since anyone can watch it on Face, anyone who can watch it on Facebook can also watch it on Cat TV website, as I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Yes?
Shirley Adams, Bennington. I think it's a false assumption that people think they're communicating with you all when they're making comments during the live stream session. I started watching the meeting here during COVID online and it took me about 10 minutes to figure out that nobody was looking at the comments that were being made during the select. And it very quickly occurred to me that it was just a gossip session and some of it was mean-spirited, which was sad, but probably 99% of it was just gossip and, and mean comments. There was very little in there that was actually meaty, that the, the board would actually be interested in. Not that putting a link to put comments to the board wouldn't be a bad idea, it might be a good idea, but I, I think it's a bad assumption that people making comments thought that it was being seen by the board.
Thanks. I, yeah, I mean, I think we are unclear. I know that on some occasions, comments that have been put in Cat TV Facebook have actually been, have been forwarded to me at my town email to make sure I see it since I'm not on social media. But, but, I, I mean, I wonder, for me, it feels like this is an opportunity to get good, meaningful comment in another way from people, from the wider audience. Right now, the only comment we get is either from people that are in the room or, I mean, people do email us, they do stop us in the grocery store. I mean, we get, you know, we get that kind of, of feedback, but it's, it's sort of hit or miss. You know, someone sees you and they're like, oh, I wanted to talk to you about that meeting the other night. And so it's a different kind, it's a different quality of feedback. And I do wonder if we had an actual comment form that said, you're not at the meeting, but we do care about what you think. So please share your thoughts with us. That that might not actually give us more democracy rather than less. But anyway, okay, Mike, you're up.
Again, Mike Bethel, Bennington. I didn't say that before, but I'm not going to say it three times. I sort of agree with Clark, or I do agree with Clark. But my thing is, I think you're taking this a little bit at this point, too serious. The last thing you want to do is make this board have any perception of not valuing free speech. The idiots that are online, those idiots are idiots. They always have been, they always will be. You're not going to change the spots.
Oh, Mike, you may have a couple of comments about you in a moment.
Let me tell you, I don't give a, shh. But what I'd like to say is, don't put this on yourselves. Table it for a while, see how it goes. There's a lot of other things, like Stuart said, the, what you're contracting, Cat TV, there's other things, I know if they still exist because I used to produce shows on Cat TV for many years. And you can do it. You can change what you want to do, but right now, don't give in to the idiots that are doing that. Just don't. Don't belittle yourselves. All of you is smart enough, brave enough. I don't like anybody going after somebody's family if that happened or somebody's personal attack or anything. That's not right. It's not appropriate. And just, I wish you would table it for now and bring it up maybe in a few weeks or a month if, if you see things getting more tempered, more violent or something like that. Then there's other avenues to take for those people. And maybe you then have to say to Cat TV, hey, you know, come on, what's going on here? But just ignore these idiots. They'll hopefully go away and winter will come and I won't be able to be here that easily. So, and I don't make comments against you.
And, but you could. And, you know, and so may, I mean, one thing, I hope that we consider, I hope that we consider whether an online comment form would be helpful because then, Mike, you could comment.
No. You all, you're going to see me and you're going to hear my comments. But you don't want to.
But you're right. In the middle of the winter, we often don't see you.
You will.
Okay.
You don't want to get into putting something in the town record. Then that's a whole other ball of wax. You don't need to do that tonight. I would be cautious.
Well, it's already in there in all its glory.
No, not if you.
Let me just remind the public that we're not taking action tonight. This is a discussion. So thank you, Mike. You're right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is the first of at least three meetings.
And maybe more, maybe more people will come in, in the audience and say, I'm for it or against it or, you know, get these people out of the loop. But I don't, I don't think you people are wanting to curb.
Mike, don't keep backing up and speaking. Stay with us. Okay. Hi.
Joe Jervis, Arlington. I think you're really talking about two orthogonal issues. That background chatter that happens in Facebook comments, as Shirley kind of talked about it. But the public comment option on the website and having a link in the videos, if you do that, links are hard to catch when you're on the screen, but it's really easy to hold up your phone and catch a QR code. So I'd suggest both.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Any other, any other comments? Anyone that hasn't spoken that would like to speak? All right, I think we want to wrap it up unless there's anything from the select board that we need to.
Sure.
Tom? Okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking here that I tend to lean toward the side of not shutting off the comments. In fact, I do, as we're sitting here right now. But I do think at the top of, of the comment section, there is a pin post from Cat TV saying that they won't tolerate, I forget what the verbiage is that they use, personal attacks, whatever. I wonder if we could ask them to extend that, to make it clear that comments on the Facebook feed are not going to be seen by this board to include a link to the comment section as was proposed here. The only thing that kind of gives me pause there is if someone from the town does happen to comment on that feed, that does create that public record situation. And I don't have the expertise to be able to, to speak to that, unfortunately. But it seems to me that we can, we can give people an area where they can make meaningful comments that will be seen by this board as opposed to just, I think the word banter is a little bit light. I think a lot of the comments that we saw in these pages and pages and pages of comments were malicious. And I think the majority of those people really have no interest in making or helping what we do here be any better. I don't think they do. I think they're enjoying their echo chamber. There are people there that don't use their own names. I don't put a lot of stock in folks' opinions if they aren't willing to stand behind them. But I think we can perform, we could come up with maybe some sort of a hybrid of what everybody is talking about here and hopefully come up with a, an answer that's acceptable to everyone.
Thank you, Tom.
You know, thank you, Tom. That's actually, I think, very reasonable process. The thing that I truly, truly do not want to get linked in with is the idea that the select board slash town government is directing when, where, and how people can comment on issues. If they have concerns or questions, they would like to direct to the board for clarification or be answered. I think the idea of a, a link, click here and it goes to us is fine. You're right, there are people on there who, who say what folks may describe as vile things. But you know what? I'm 71 years old. I spent my whole life around people saying dumb S-H-I-T. And if I want to get down in the sewer with them, that's on me. I think we let people, give people credit for having good sense. Some of these people out here look and see that stuff and say, what tripe? And move on. We can't get wrapped around the axle of policing people's thoughts and views. If we want to communicate with the public, we want the public to be able to communicate with us. The idea, the QR side, the, the link where you say, click here if you have something you'd like to discuss or bring to the attention of the select board. So that way, these anonymous people who may have something valid to say, I don't know, they have that option. And those people who just want to make noise and rattle people's cages, well, guess what? They're rattling your cages, man. They got you guys dancing to their tune. And we're on the verge of, in my opinion, a slippery slope of, of speech control. I, I don't know who here has ever been to the inter-German border back in the bad days when they had guard dogs and spotlights and landmines trying to control people, you know? They were real big about controlling what people could say to and about the government. I've lived it, I've seen it. No, it's a slippery slope. At what point do we start saying, okay, you can't say this, or here's how you must say what you have to say? Wrong. Give people options, they choose the options, move along. Our number one option is to protect the rights of everyone in this community or this country to speak non-threatening, non-fighting word comments. I don't have to like what you have to say, but I have to respect the fact that you have the right to say it.
All right. So can we, let's, thank you very much for that. Let's end this conversation now and we will revisit it, hopefully with a policy that, a protocol that reflects what you're hearing tonight at the next meeting.
If I could just wrap up with one comment, I want to thank everybody for a lot of, I think what turned into really good conversation tonight. I heard a lot of good input from the board and from the public. So thank you for, for everybody's input. Every single thing that I heard tonight had some valuable, positive contribution to the conversation.
Thank you. All right. On to errors and omissions.
Yes, thank you. This is an annual event. The listers must complete the grand list no later than December 31st of a given year. It allows them an opportunity to correct deficiencies that they have discovered or have been brought to their attention. And in this case, we have two changes to the grand list, which were the result of an error in the way the land was looked at, generating a couple of tax bills which should not have been generated. So in both, in this case, these are both reductions in the grand list for this particular parcel out on Fox Hill Road. And it needs your approval to complete the grand list change.
And so do you need, what do you need?
A motion to accept the proposal from the listers.
All right. Somebody make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any, whatever that word is.
Abstention.
Abstention. Okay. We're all in favor. All right. On to managers' report.
And I will try to keep this short. We have one action item. The United Counseling Service Superhero 5K is coming this Saturday, not this Saturday, but Saturday and November 2nd. UCS is requesting the closing.
UCS is requesting the closure, and I believe it's a running closure that they work with the Police Department, for a portion of Main Street from Benmont Avenue to Branch Street, and a portion of Gage Street from Bradford to Safford. This is for their 5K event. They will close those streets beginning at 9:00 AM, and the event should be over sometime around noon. That really depends on how fast people move through it, because all matters of age and abilities are participating in this event. I'm looking for a motion to approve the closures as presented. They have worked very closely with the Police Department all year on this, so we're fairly confident this will be very smooth.
I'll move that we accept the road closure as presented by the Town Manager.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I do want to note that in the highlighted portion of the, of her letter, of Amy's letter, it does say that it's closed for the duration from 9:00 to 12:00. It's not a moving closure.
I understand that.
Yeah. Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, that was my question. I remember last year, they did a roll, a rolling closure, kind of as the people, the last people that were running in the, in the race went by, they reopened the road.
Yeah, it says-
Do we know why they're not doing that this year?
I, that, if that, that may have been an agreement between the Police Department and the, and the UCS. Depending on, I think, whatever issues might have developed last year, I don't really know myself.
So are we, so that's closing the road for three hours?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that, if that's what we need, but it does feel like if they could do a rolling closure, it would be-
So are you saying that there's a discrepancy between the ask and, from the manager's report and the ask from the UCS?
No, I, I, no, just verbally, he just, Stu had indicated that he thought maybe it was rolling, but she very specifically says it's for the duration.
Sounds like it's safe, safer. I think-
I'm sure it is, yeah, yeah.
Sounds like a great event. I support that.
There's a straggler. That's really a straggler.
That would be me, but it sounds like a great event. I support that.
All right.
So we have a motion on the floor?
We do. All right. All those in favor of the road closure motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then I-
And just one announcement, one quick announcement. We just received word this past week that the V-Trans Bicycle and Pedestrian Program has approved 1.058 million in federal funds under the large-scale additional funding category to help us complete the former Ninja Path, now known as the Willumsack Valley Pathway. This, these funds will help us come close to completing the entire pathway, if, if my memory serves me.
Which is super. And you were going to tell us the schedule for the ADA button at the, at the firehouse?
Yes. By the end of this week, the concrete sidewalk at the, at the entrance to the building, which has been the holdup, will be replaced by the Department of Public Works. When that is completed, the week following, provided that we can secure our electrical contractors, we will install a post and a, and an exterior button that will allow people to access the doorway by pressing the button.
Yay! Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, as promised, so Shannon Barsati, the Community Development Director, it's late, is, is here. If anyone has questions, either for Stu in the manager's report, or for Shannon in her monthly report.
I have a question.
Okay.
And I guess Shannon would be, who I direct, who I direct this to. I'm reading here, the, under the Ben High redevelopment, the, I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce her name, the Extension Assistant Professor in Community and Economic Development for UVM. This, Ben High is a community resilience hub, and Neighbor Works with a community resilience fund. When, when did that come about? This is news to me. When was that?
Well, if, we've been talking about the Ben High redevelopment for some time-
Right.
And about UVM Extension being, having a space there. So UVM Extension currently has an office above Citizens Bank, and they're going to be moving into Ben High, and they just hired, her name is Maria, I'm also not going to pronounce her last name, but she's, she's wonderful. She just sort of jumped right in and started attending some of the meetings about Ben High development. And she flagged this grant, and said this could be a really good opportunity. It's through the EPA, it's called a Community Change Grant. So I wasn't familiar with the idea of a resilience hub, but it makes a lot of sense for Ben High. So the idea is like, if you already have a community center in a space, then a resilience hub is just using that space in the event of a natural disaster, a man-made disaster, a climate kind of extreme event of heat or cold, et cetera, that you're using it as a shelter space. You're training your staff that are operating it to be deployed and ready to move when needed. And so some of the funds, if, you know, right now, it's just a grant that's in development, the application, but the funds would be used to support that idea at Ben High, which would also include energy resilience. So that would be, some of the funds would go towards solar and the backup battery that could power the solar in a power outage, because, I didn't know this, but one of the things that is most common in Vermont, as far as a natural weather event, is power outages. So just having that backup power and paying for that through this grant could be really helpful. And then the resilience fund is the idea of expanding that support beyond just the Ben High space and the programs that are there, and really looking at the work that Neighbor Works has been doing through their Heat Squad program. That provides energy efficiency upgrades to housing, and then their program that's called the, well, it started here as the Rental Rehab Program, and now it's statewide. It's called the V-hip Housing Improvement Program. So the idea would be to put more money into that pool, so that all of the surrounding area in the downtown census tract would be able to have access to those funds. And that would be for both single-family homes, and Neighbor Works said, you know, they could do multi-unit, but only up to four units. So that could be great, because right now, that V-hip program, for example, the applications that came in for that, they're usually $50,000 grants, way, the number of people who wanted to get funding way out exceeded what was available. So if the EPA has funding for this kind of work, one of the pieces would be a Healthy Homes Initiative to improve the air quality and energy efficiency, and help people bring their costs down for the utilities. So it seems like a good match, and Maria is working at it, so that when it comes, right now, I'm in the process of working with her to kind of refine it and work on the budget, and then it would, we would apply through the Town of Bennington for the funding.
Okay. Let's, you mentioned, I think you said shelter, in terms of weather events and so forth.
Right.
Is, is this something you're working in conjunction with our emergency plan, management plan that's been being bandied around of late?
I can actually speak to that. So in the annexes, one of the things that we've been talking about, so as you know, the annexes are the, which are addendums-
Right.
-to the Emergency Management Plan, or what are we going to do for cooling and heating emergencies? So the fact that there would be a generator or backup battery of some sort means that these spaces could be considered, basically for, you know, if we had a heat emergency, or if we had, we had some kind of event that meant that, that people didn't have access to either air conditioning or heat-
Right.
-that this could be, this, this could be a possibility. But those annexes have not, that actually, hopefully this week, we will have a meeting where we actually start fleshing out those annexes, and then we'll see if it's even, if it's even feasible, but it's, you know-
Right.
It's a thought.
All right, so, right, so they're thoughts. That's what was confusing me. I remember we've had multiple meetings, and there's some back and forth about, first of all, who's going to operate these, where are they going to be?
Yeah.
When and what. And I do recall both heating and cooling type circumstances seem to be, I would say, a point of contention, lacking in clarity as to who's going to do what and where. And I think somebody even at one time mentioned Ben High, and I thought I heard that kind of get pushed aside, is not, not on the-
So the, so we are still working with Dara Zink, who is, is still sort of leading us, and she's actually, hopefully later this week, going to be able to lead us in an exercise of if, you know, if then, sort of, if this happens, then what, then what are our options, and what can we do? So we are, we are in the very beginning stages of that. Tom and I are representing Select Board on that group. Jack is a member, there, there are a number of members. And so, you know, hopefully, we did not meet in August at all, because people had vacations, and it was just a chaotic time, but we're hoping to get this done before-
Right.
-the snow flies.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Shannon.
Sure.
I got questions.
Okay.
This Board was already told specifically that as far as the Ben High being used as a shelter, it would be used only as an emergency shelter, as our emergency shelters in town have been used in the past. Are you now saying that may change?
No, it's, it's just another emergency location that could be deployed in an event, especially because there are going to be staff there, there's also a kitchen, there's also showers, et cetera, that make this space usable.
Are you saying that by?
Yeah.
For heating and cooling?
In extreme events. Yeah, that's the idea.
Because the Board was already told, it would be used only as an emergency shelter, as we've used facilities in Bennington before.
I think I'm saying the same thing.
I'm hearing something different.
You're hearing exactly the same.
I'm saying the same thing.
You're saying the same thing.
Well, we've, we've never had warming or cooling shelters before, that the Town Taxpayers are paying for.
This turns into one, we hope, with some of the things that Jeannie just said.
It's already, it's not adding anything else, but I, I don't want, we should not get ahead of ourselves.
Yeah.
We have not, there is not a single word written about an annex for the Emergency Management Plan. So let's not presuppose. We have absolutely no idea.
And, you know, as all of these grant applications go, we have no idea if we'll even get a dime, so we have to wait and see, but, but I think that connecting it to the work that's already being done, to the work that the Energy Committee is already doing, particularly about getting the word out to people about what are the cost savings that are out there already through all the different programs, so.
And it will come to the Board. Then this will come to the Board, if anything comes of it.
Right.
So nobody can clarify that right now?
Clear, there's nothing to clarify. There is not a single word written, and the meetings haven't even happened, so hopefully-
So we're in the thinking and talking stage, not the doing stage. Would that be fair to say?
We have, we are in the imagining stage.
Okay, well, that's part of-
We have not even, we have not, there is not a single word on paper, which, for many of us, is frustrating, but it's also, you know, the, the thinking about it is, is useful.
Okay, so brainstorming, I think-
All we're doing is brainstorming.
Yeah. I think that's important, Nancy, Nancy's concern, that we're not planning to take any action, we're thinking about what if, or what could we do down the road if the stars line up and fairy dust rains out of the sky full of money.
Particularly fairy dust, yeah.
$40,000 a year the Town Taxpayers pay to advertise Bennington. And Shannon does have a breakdown here. I think we need to have Shannon come in and put that on the Board. I, I think it's to the point where we need to start using most of that money on new events, to give people a reason to come to Bennington to stop and to eat. I think way too much on advertising and talking to different business owners, they are not seeing the people coming to the doors. We've been paying this now for how many years? Five years? Has it been longer?
I'm not sure. It's been five.
It has been five years.
It's been five?
Or almost five years, yeah.
This is our fifth year.
Well, I, I think, I think the Board needs to have a discussion, and I think we really need to look at shifting most of that money to, you know, you see for Mayfest, the Car Fest, different things in the downtown, people are coming here. We can't wait another two or three years. We've got to do more events, and to me, that's where we can use the $40,000, and we can, we can do things to benefit all of the businesses across town, but we really need to get, have a discussion going on this. We can't keep waiting.
Can I just follow up to that? I think it's important that we have a discussion. I think it's important that we not impose opinion on the outcome of that discussion just yet, but to Nancy's point, we've been talking in, in these settings a couple of times about having Shannon come and sort of have a, a work session with us on the way that we use those funds, and I think that it's important that we do that.
Yeah, and we can think about when we want to do that, and if, I mean, again, their budgetary, I think the other piece that didn't get mentioned, but should certainly, is right below, is how much Brattleboro, Rutland, Manchester, and Wilmington, and, and Dover spend on, on marketing. So Brattleboro spends $45,000 and $20,000 additionally for arts events, so that's $65,000, and $45,000 comes from the local option tax. I'm just reading Shannon's notes. Rutland spends $120,000 on marketing, 70% comes from corporate sponsorships, and 30%, which is basically $40,000, comes from, is in the budget, so. And then Manchester allocates $50,000, and they give that to their local chamber group, sort of, Manchester Business Association, and then, and they don't do any of that work themselves, then it goes out to that group. And then Wilmington has $110,000 on digital marketing, and another $40,000 on events, and all that's coming from their local option tax revenue. And then Dover, which is next door, is spending another $110,000. So that whole region has a huge amount of money, so, you know, so I think the, the discussion, we should definitely be having the discussion, but it's a multiple discussion. It's like, $40,000 is a drop in the bucket, and we all know it.
Correct.
Yeah.
I just want to mention some of the history of that, for those, I guess, none of you were on the Board when that, well, maybe you were, Jeannie, you were there.
When it was zero?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and I had just started the job, I had just been hired, and actually, marketing wasn't even in my job description, and I said, oh, okay, everybody, I have to, but I am not, you know, doing the marketing. So essentially, the way that, that this was presented to the Board at that time, five years ago, or five plus years ago, was a group of business owners who came to the Board and said, we would really like a digital marketing campaign that's focused on Bennington, because the chamber has, had then expanded to be the entire county. And so there wasn't really a Bennington Chamber, as then it became the Southwestern Chamber, so, Southwestern Chamber of Vermont. So, you know, that was the original intent. That doesn't mean it has to stay that way by any means, but just so that everyone knows, that, so we put out an RFP, a Request for Proposals for a Digital Marketing Firm, and we were lucky enough to have a local company, 802 Marketing. And since that time, since we started, really, the majority of the funds were being spent on those paid ads, like this pay per click, you know, you, you literally pay for words, which is the search engine optimization, this SEO that you mentioned earlier, Clark. And then that pain for those things kind of bumps you up, right? So that now, you can see after five years, it worked, because now, instead of the chamber site, nothing against their site, which is great, but, you know, that used to be number one, and now the Vermont Begin's here site is, has much more, you know, search words higher, and that's because we paid for that. Do you see what I mean? But now that, that traffic that's getting there is organic, which means people aren't getting there because of a paid ad, they're just finding it because of the content. So we've started to shift the funding to be less on the paid ads and more on the content, which is the written, the photography, you know, all of the, the content that the banner is actually producing through their staff, in their marketing department. And, and that shift, I think, is what we wanted to happen, so that piece has, has worked.
No, on, on that, Shannon, I think Jonah and I, and I can't say the gentleman, Keith, we were schmoozing about signage, remember? And Jonah had mentioned something at one time or another, there was some sort of study showing how, what it cost and where we could place signage over in New York State on seven. As I related to them, as many of you know, my wife and I just moved up here more recently than most of you, but one of the things we do, we leave Connecticut in the late afternoon, and by the time we got up just past Troy, Husick Fall, it was time to get something to eat, go pee, get some gas, and look for a place to sleep, and we were looking for a home up here. And I see the idea of out there before 279- And I see the idea of out there before two seventy-nine begins, maybe something as simple as a sign before that turnoff that says, "Gas, food, and lodging," next rate turn. You know, something, and even out here, two seventy-nine, how Papa Pete says, "Last place to eat for forty miles." Maybe the idea when you're coming this way on nine, you say if you're, "Gas, food, and lodging," down here. You know, Mr. Woods owns a hotel, and when my wife and I would come up here, we, we didn't really know, we'd ended up the Hampton Inn, why? Because they were, had an online presence. We did not know these nice little mom and pop places existed.
Not that there's anything wrong with that.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, but in terms of bringing people into the town, you know, we, we didn't come into the town to stay at some of the nice places they have in town, because we didn't know they were there. But something as simple as those little signs, "Gas, food, and lodging," two miles, before you get to two seventy-nine, because everybody knows, once those New Jersey plates get to two seventy-nine, it's pedal down. These places we talked about, as we all know, Brattleboro, Rutland, Manchester, and Wilmington, they have a road that goes right to the center of their town. So, you're sitting there in Wilmington in that bumper-to-bumper traffic, there's restaurants, hell, that looks nice, let's pull over and go look there. Unfortunately, we don't have that capture.
There's only one way through.
Right. So, you know, they've got all this money to spend, but more importantly, they have the audience right there, you know? So, I wish we were in that situation, but we got to do something to direct people off of two seventy-nine into our town here. So, I don't know if Jonah still has access to that information, but it's something I would be more than willing to sit down, and hopefully, we can work out another marketing plan to bring people to...
So, we're talking, so we should, so our deadline for that is also November eleventh, quite frankly, if we're adding money to the budget. And quite frankly, unless, I mean, these towns all have the option tax, so what we have is the taxpayer. And so, it's worth, I mean, if, let's, let's see if we can do a little bit of research on, I know there are rules about what can go on two seventy-nine, what can go on that curve that takes you to West Road by the old junkyard. There are some, some rules about those sorts of things. There was, and Jonah, I don't know if this is what you and Clark were talking about, but the Chamber, the BBC, and a lot of merchants looked at whether we should continue a billboard that used to be on the, just, just this side of, just at Husick Falls, just before you came in, and that a local merchant was paying a thousand dollars a month for. And the data that they could pull was that it was a sink of money, and that there was no, that that particular...
Right.
That particular thing wasn't, wasn't helpful. But in terms of what kind of signage is actually possible, it would be, I don't know who, I don't know who that falls into, but go for it, Jonah.
In reference to your question, at the time when two seventy-nine was being contemplated and then completed, I was serving on the Board of the Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, and we did a very detailed assessment of the signage that was currently there, and worked with the New York Department of Transportation, and basically, we have maxed out the signage that we can get from the state, so in terms of just signage that says, "Gas," "Lodging," et cetera, we have maxed out what we're allowed to do on that strip. So, then the question shifted to, well, what about we just buy a billboard to create our own, and we even designed one that kind of looked like, you know, a standard street sign, but we were quickly learned that that's specifically disallowed, you're not allowed to make billboards that look like actual traffic signs, which I respect. But having said that, there was still this need, and at the time, the price was around twelve hundred a month, but I've heard is a range of six hundred to a thousand a month, depending on location. But I would encourage this group, as someone who's worked in the marketing and advertising field for decades, that you want to, you want to include the merchants in this conversation, who have decades of experience in what works and what doesn't work, and some, and no offense, but, you know, not seeing, we want to take advantage of people that have the marketing expertise for their opinions, rather than just going on people's opinions on what they think might work well. And I think that resonates especially with those merchants who have been around for decades and have seen a lot of ideas come and go, and then brought back as new. So, love the idea of thinking, always thinking about the marketing plan and how to best use those dollars, but I would suggest that we do need to be thoughtful about it and make sure we're engaging professionals in assisting in that.
Jonah, I think that's really important, and in that process, I think we're going to discover some, some pretty significant successes in the current plan that we're using, and I think that we all have to have open minds and recognize that as we, as we dig deeper into it.
Well, and just on to that point, also to what Jonah said, is that was why we chose to go with a professional marketing firm, because we really don't have a very large budget, as you can see, we have the lowest budget of any other town around us. So, we, the thing about doing a digital marketing campaign is that you can actually measure, you can see, you know, the, the company that's managing this can look and see, like, how many people have clicked, and how many people have gone through all the pages to see which restaurants are, how many pages are they opening, and people's websites are they visiting, and all of that traffic, we don't ask merchants to pay for any of it, so all the listings that we have on the site are free, and we promote all of our businesses that way. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Great. Any other questions for Shannon? We do have an executive session after this, guys. Yes?
I don't think it's helpful to compare what other towns, their taxpayers are paying compared to Bennington. Wilmington, Dover, Manchester, many people who are pretty well off financially have second homes, they come for the weekends, the vacations in the summer. You also have seniors retiring that are pretty well off, so it's a whole different thing to what our town taxpayers can pay, to what they can afford to pay in some of those other towns. Shannon, and this is for the board too, I don't ever recall anyone from the Fair Food Initiative, from the groups listed here, in five years, I don't recall anyone ever representing that group, being willing to come in, talk about their mission and their dream, and how they're going to fund it, and answer questions from the public. Now, I remember when it was announced several years ago that a couple of groups got the million-dollar grant to study food inequities, and they were going to come up with a plan. Nobody's ever come in and told us about the plan. The community market is under the umbrella of the Fair Food Initiative. No one from the market, from that Board of Directors, has ever come in here to talk, so I really think we, this board and the people at Bennington are way overdue to hear from somebody who actually is on that board to come in and talk and answer questions.
And would that also apply to the Vermont Veterans Home that is part of this? I mean, I, I think this question has been asked before, and Shannon, my memory was that, what you said is that it's a loose group of individuals who are all benefiting from this initiative. Maybe you want to talk about that?
Well, but I...
About how this connects again, because there are numerous partners.
Yeah, there are numerous partners.
Yeah, so...
Let me just finish my question.
Yeah.
There is definitely a group, the Fair Food Initiative, and I could name who the two or three big players are. And I've seen the other groups under the umbrella there spreading out the problem many people have. We don't see how any of these groups are going to be financially sustainable with big infusions of cash every year. Everything is based in Bennington, but these are Bennington County groups, so I really think we need the leaders of the Fair Food Initiative, somebody to be willing to come in on an agenda.
Well, what would the, an agenda, it could be informational, but there's no action, there's no action to be taken, because we are not, we are not their bosses, in any way. So, it's like asking the Veterans Home to come in and tell us if they think they have balanced their budget, and what their plans are for next year, and that, because we want to know, because we want to make sure they're doing what we think they should do. We don't have that kind of authority.
But I think we're the only town in Bennington County where our taxpayers are paying a town staff member to work. We're the only town I know that has made a loan. We made a big loan to the community market, I don't know if any of the other towns has made loads to any other businesses. And I really think it's time for the leaders who push this to be willing to come in here and explain, how are they going to fund this in the future without these big infusions of cash?
Let me just mention that we don't ask individual business owners to come in and open their books either, even though this board may have voted yes to lend them money through the Town Revolving Loan Program.
Well, yeah, but the individual business owners are getting these huge state and federal, federal grants, and that's a concern I raised when I found out the community market got the big loan from the town, and there wasn't a public discussion.
So, let's keep it to, let's, let's try to stay on topic. It does seem like one thing that could be helpful is getting copies of community development director positions, or comparable positions, other places. I'll see if I can pull some of that together, because I think there is some misinformation about the role of a community development director, and that it isn't just Bennington that has, like, a unique position. So, let me see if I can...
I also don't know, I don't feel like I had an actual question there, so I, I don't know if the board is tasking me with anything, or if you're just making a statement.
No, no.
Well, because, because you're the connector to the group, see if there's anybody willing to come in and talk publicly and answer questions.
Well, I'm, I am the grant administrator, so I, the funds come into the town, the funds then go to whoever has gotten these grants. So, if, if you're looking for a community-based organization to come, that really should come from the select board.
Yes. All right. So, all right, any other questions on Shannon's report, or the town manager's report?
Yeah.
Okay.
The grants for the pathway, unless I'm reading this wrong, I see one for the Ninja Trail for one point nine million, almost two million, am I reading that right?
Can you point us in the right direction, Nancy?
You're back on the manager's report, right?
Manager's report, page three, there's a notice from the state of Vermont.
I'm sorry, yes, it's one point nine five eight, I wrote down one point oh.
So, does that mean we're getting two grants, one for, or are you referencing the same grant?
It's the same grant.
All right, I thought...
It's a typo.
Because we're going to have to pay the two hundred thousand, right?
Yes, there is a twenty percent match, which may include in-kind services.
And where is this, that they're talking about finishing it up?
Well, Dan, do you want to...
I have a question.
I just don't know, where's this last section you're talking about?
Where's the Ninja Trail?
Well, this is saying Loomsack Valley, then I'm reading Ninja Trail.
We changed, remember, we voted to change the names?
No, I know that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, the pathway formerly known as the Ninja Path, although I think that name's going to be with us for a long time. It essentially, the Ninja Path itself, although it's part of a larger now Loomsack Valley pathway system, starts at the Walmart Plaza. You'll, you'll, you'll see that there's a existing pathway that goes around the Walmart, and then connects to Morse Road. And currently, it continues along Morse Road, then goes back by the self-storage facility on Morse Road, and then goes under Route two seventy-nine, behind Hanaford, and then to Bennington College. The only portions that are currently paved are the Walmart section and the section that goes to the Bennington College intersection at Silk Road. We have, we have under contract now, the middle portion of that to be paved, and also have a very large bridge structure go over the Furnace Brook, that's the biggest and most expensive part of this project. That has been funded, we have a contract, they expect to begin work in the spring and hopefully be done by the fall of 2025. The sections that this hopefully will fund, depends upon how the bids come in, would be the sections between the Walmart Plaza, behind Morse Road, and then connect to the bridge at Furnace Brook, and then on the other side of Furnace Brook, connect from there all the way to the paved section that is now, goes to the Bennington College intersection from Hanaford. So, it would fill in those two gaps. Right now, after, next year, we'll have basically three sections finished, and then with two gaps that we need to fill, and we hope to do that with these funds.
All right, let's, if we can, let's move to upcoming agendas, which is really straightforward. The two items on tonight's agenda are the online commenting protocol and traffic calming will be on the next agenda, as well as the Bennington Police Department's coming in for their quarterly-ish update. Yes, and that's, that's, for the big agenda items, that's, that's what we've got, which will keep us certainly very busy.
Did you say police...
Yeah, yeah. All right. So, if we can do other business fairly quickly, because we have an executive session, that may take a bit of time. Let's see, Clark, are you first this time, or is it Tom?
I guess, whatever they call me, I just had a quick question, or bit of prose. Act eighteen, you know, the Fuel Act, Act eighteen. You know, I've been reading some documents where, under that provision, it looks like we could possibly be paying eight dollars a gallon for heating oil. And I'm just wondering, from the select board standpoint, have we reached out to our constituents and got a feel for their position on this, and the position we should take as their representatives in communicating up the line with our...
Are you talking about fuel oil, or...
Yeah, the clean heating standards that are now coming up.
Oh, the steel, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, I guess, you know, when the next legislature convenes, they're going to vote on the final ruling, but...
So, again...
Yeah.
We need to stay in our lane.
I understand, no, that's why I'm saying...
But yes.
Our role as representing the people here in Bennington, at least on the street I live on, I have several retired neighbors who always tell me about, they're worried about losing their home over things. But here in this town, maybe...
We have legislators.
Right.
So, our legislators are...
Have we reached out to the nuts of people, that's what I'm saying, I would like to get them on record, get them involved with representing our concerns about the welfare, well-being of our constituents. I really think, you know, should it happen, God forbid, eight dollar a gallon heating oil is going to destroy people.
So, why don't we, why don't we do this, because, because I think, quite honestly, I mean, if you've looked at our delegation, we've got a lot of new, we will have a lot of new people.
Right.
And they're not going to be very conversant on this. Let, let's see if we can get something, I'll, I'll work on getting something that just summarizes what the next couple months' plan is in the legislature, so that, so we just know lay of the land, and then people can work with their legislators as they, as they wish, because this is, again, it's not anything we control.
Well, it's not that we can't control, but I think we speak for the people of Bennington.
Well, only on, only on town matters, honestly.
Right, we don't speak as a board on, on state matters. I will tell you that I, as a resident, have reached out, and I am in dialogue, because I have the same concern that you do.
Oh, well, then maybe I'll have you do it. Okay.
I have...
Okay, one of us will do this.
This is a huge concern.
All right, one of, one of us will do this.
Yep.
All right, yeah, I think it, your, your points well, well taken, I think, we just need to point them to people who can actually impact the outcome, and that's their legislative delegation.
There are energy committees, and, yeah, yeah.
It's a legislative delegation.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So, that was you, Nancy?
Yeah, the plans for Benmont Avenue all the way to Main Street have been done and ready to go for ten years. When are you going to have Dan on the agenda to put the plans on the wall so everyone can see and understand what's being proposed, to see if the board and the public supports everything, or if we feel changes need to be made?
I'm going to reframe that to say, you would like to see an agenda item be understanding the whole scope and timing for Benmont Avenue, so duly noted, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah. Couple meetings ago, I questioned where most of the money was going to come from.
For what?
To pay for the work done at the tennis courts at the rec center. Stu had an official send me an email, I have a lot of questions on that. Did the rest of the board get that, Stu, or could you get that to them?
Sure. Could you ask the manager your questions in response to the email he sent you?
But could you ask it, could you have a meeting with the manager?
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah, not, not now, please.
I want the rest of the board to see the email, and then I think we need to have a public discussion.
You're alluding to something that we have no knowledge about, so it's difficult to understand.
Well, I really don't want to go into it tonight, because I...
No, please don't go into it, because we don't know what you're talking about, so...
Will you let me answer, all you do is cut me off, Jeannie, and you don't do it to anybody else, really.
Well, Nancy, I, I will say, we want to get to your point.
Okay, Jeannie, here goes.
Okay.
I went to the Planning Commission meeting last week.
That's not getting...
And I asked, when will the current town plan they're working on be ready to come before the board and the public?
Mm-hmm.
And I believe Dan said, you said, hopefully, the middle of next year, 2025. My question is this, state law requires that we approve and update our town plan every eight years. Stu, isn't our current town plan from 2015?
Our current town plan runs until 2026, I'm told. We have, we have a letter confirming that from the Bennington County Regional Commission, which oversees or maintains the database... which oversees or maintains the database on these town plans.
Isn't, isn't, no, I'm sorry. Wasn't our current town plan, we have now adopted, approved by the Select Board in 2015?
That's probably true, Nancy. I don't have the exact dates, but it was amended to include a, a section on energy.
Yes.
And at that time, that was considered to be an update to the town plan, which extended the deadline until 2026.
And we have something from the State of Vermont saying that our town plan is, is good, even though it expired last year?
We have something from the Regional Commission that confirms that our, our extension is until 2026, yes.
How can, how can the Regional Commission overrule the state law?
Nancy, you're, again, this is.
Jeanie, I've been asking about the town plan since last year.
The Regional Commission keeps the database, Nancy, which is where the dates are kept for expiring plan.
And further questions can be done. This is other business. This is a time to raise other business. It is not a time to start discussion.
This is other business, Jeanie. This is, I've, I've been reading.
You've raised a question, and so that Stu will get an answer.
So, does the State of Vermont think that our town plan is from 2024, or do they know it's from 2015 with an extension?
I, I don't know what the State of Vermont thinks at the present time. I do know that we have an extension from, that was approved in, and I don't know the date we adopted the energy audit, but.
2018? Okay.
It extends it till 2026.
Okay, I just didn't know that they could do that without the State of Vermont approval. So we have something I can look at, at the town office, that says that?
We have written communication from the Bennington County Regional Commission, yes. I don't, I don't know if I have it directly in my possession immediately, but I could find it, definitely. And we have relied on the Regional Commission's opinions for decades.
As all Bennington County municipalities do.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
I'll get together with Dan.
Anything else?
That's it.
Sarah, anything?
Yes. Excuse me. This, something just a little lighter note. This past week, I was working in Brimfield with my business, and some friends from Vermont, Bennington, came up and just popped into the booth and said hi, which is really nice. It's just nice to see people there. And then also, coming up soon, I'll be in the Vermont building with some local businesses. The Chocolate Shop will be there for, with us, and Ardent Flame will be there with us. And then also, I want to thank the Fire Department for coming out while we were away, putting out a car fire next to our house.
Oh, no!
Which was really, you know, was, which was awesome, you know? Some neighbors called and said, hey, are you guys home? No? They're like, hey, there's a car fire right next to your house. Like, they got it, we're good. So it was really nice. We, we came home and saw this little pile, it was fine, it was perfectly fine.
It wasn't your car?
It was not our car, no. We had our cars. And I also want to just reiterate to our colleagues on the Select Board that please be respectful of all of our time and citizens' time. This was going to, on our agenda, to go to eight, and now we're going till nine. So please be respectful of everybody's time, and our citizens' time as well. So that's all for me.
Thank you. The only thing I have is vote tomorrow. It's a special election, 10 to 7, at all the polling places, I mean, North Bennington, Bennington. And you should vote not only if you are highly in favor or highly opposed, but if you're in the middle. Like, this is a bond vote that you should care about.
Are we putting out the signs so people know to vote?
We don't do that. The SVSU does. It's a special election for them.
It's a school board election. Yep. Am I up?
Yep, you're up.
In the interest of time, I think that if I'm not mistaken, it's the Monks' wedding anniversary today, and I just want to apologize.
Oh, no!
And thank, want to apologize to Mrs. Monks.